Session and Duncanville City Council meeting for Tuesday, April the 20th, 2021, starting at six o'clock for a briefing session. In accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th of 2020 is extended by the Office of the Governor on June 12th, 2020. City Council from city Duncanville, Texas will conduct a city council regular meeting by video conference at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 20th. And according to advance of public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, paren's also called social distancing in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There is no public access to a physical location. When we get to our actual city council meeting, individuals who wish to speak must have registered. And at this moment, we have one individual who does wish to speak, and I will recognize an individual at an appropriate time. So audiences in listen mode only, and each council member, as we go through things, please physically raise your hand. So either I or Kristen may recognize you or use the raise hand feature available through the Zoom software. We appreciate that. And we get to city council meeting itself, we will go through roll call votes as we have been doing for quite some time. Okay, so first thing that we have on our agenda in our briefing session is the consent items. So city manager, Aretha Farrell Benavides, if you please go through the consent items.
Mayor and members of the council, good evening. We have two consent items on the agenda today. The first item, item four A, is a Dallas County MCIP agreement. The previous agreement, it was executed in 2011. It was a 10-year agreement that allowed Dallas, City of Duncanville to leverage Dallas County assets to support road improvements. The City of Duncanville uses the county for a number of things on our annual long line striping for pavement markings. Most recently, it was also a method used to get emergency leveling of Wintergreen Boulevard and Cockle Road and the De Soto Bridge in the southeast corner of the city, as well as the follow-up rehab for both locations. Item four B is a text municipal maintenance agreement. It's an amendment number two. The municipal maintenance agreement with text dot dates back to 1994. The purpose is to delineate maintenance responsibilities between the state and the City of Duncanville. The base document of 1994 outlines the standard responsibilities. The First Amendment occurred in 2005, allowed for the city to mow and pick up litter along the I-20 during growing season. Amendment two was done in 2021. It allows for the city to change the pavement markings and add curbs and delineate delineators across the Daniel Dell Bridge, across US 67, which allows for a bike and pedestrian use stipulates that the city is responsible for maintaining the pavement markings and curves and delineates this into perpetuity. And that concludes the items that we have on our consent.
Okay, city manager, I have a question that applies to both of these consent items. They were quite lengthy. I think one was like 59 pages, another one was some 60 some odd pages. I started to read them and began to get totally disconnected with what they were trying to say. So my, my question is, we are updating both. And looking back in terms of his, I would presume that someone has examined the past and looking at the document that we're being asked to consent with today, that there are no significant changes that need to be brought to our attention. Or if there are, would somebody please advise us as such? In fact, on four B, it is voluminous, getting down into detail on road markings, even, you know, down to architectural drawings and construction of materials and dimensions and so on, extremely, extremely detailed. And that applies to something new that we're doing across 67 as well. We've never had that before. So my question, I guess I see that Mr. Ramey is not popped up. So I, Greg, can you kind of help us out here that is anything of ultra significance that we need to be aware of? Because these documents are very, very lengthy and they are quite involved.
Regarding the MCIP agreement with Dallas County, that's the standard language we have. And basically any work that we do under the MCIP is done as a project-specific agreement. And so we just, you know, so we don't execute anything based on this document. We just reference it. So like again, as, as Aretha mentioned, when we work with the county every year to do all our striping on our, for pavement, we have a project-specific agreement. And that was the same thing like we did when we did the winter green leveling and the winter green rehab. We're all parts of projects, specific agreements under the master CIP document. Regarding text on most of that stuff was the draw, the drawings that we were submitting that are submitted as, as part of the packet, because that's what's going to text out so that they know that this is what we are putting on their, on their bridge. So that they've already seen it, but now it's sort of the official document. So they said, this is what we're signing up to take care of. You're letting us do it, and we're saying that we'll, we'll pay to put it in and we'll pay to take care of it. So a lot of it again was just so that the full packet again for the record, for the future, we would have the whole document. So we know what we signed up for when it comes time as far as the amendment two. And again, what we're doing is right now, the striping that's on there is just the standard striping that text does. But as you know, with the Dunk, the Daniel Dell rehab, where we're going to the four lanes and the bike and pedestrian facilities that required us to re-stripe and then add some curb and delineators to, as a, as a part of that work that's getting ready to, you know, just started.
Yeah, and I, and I did notice in the aerial view of the shot in terms of delineating the scope of work, it's limited. This document is limited strictly to where Daniel Dell crosses 67.
That's correct. That's the only part that's text out right away.
Okay, and going back to four A, what this document does is allows us to, I guess, go to the county for the sharing of project funding. Without that, we would also be standing by ourselves, but this one gives us our ability to share funds.
Well, it's us to sort of work with them and so and get, and get either caution or, you know, reduce, you know, the, the, the better rates that we get by leveraging in the case of striping the, the county assets. And that was the same way we did it with the winter green. So we just.
To Ramey, let this also talk about the performing services for us. So where they do work for our behalf also, so this is how we use them to perform certain services for us.
Yes, like the build grant that we tried to get a few months ago to get some additional, that Dallas County took the lead on a build grant, trying to help us do some of that interim bike lane and striping from 67 out to the De Soto city limit. Again, when they're acting and of the Main Street corridor study, anything where we're partnering with Dallas is done under the auspices of this greater agreement. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sorry if I monopolized any conversation of the other city council members, but I just wanted to bring that up. Any council members have any other questions on these two items?
Miss Jamison has her hand up.
Jamison, yes, I see it, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I know I read on one and I'm having a hard time right now bringing up the agenda on my phone to reread the item. But, but I remember one thing that I, I want to bring up is that I want to make sure that before things are done on either one of these items, that it comes before the council. I don't, I don't want to run into, oh, we told you the Cedar Hill sign is going to be in Duncanville. I want to make sure that everything that we agree to with the county or with any of these projects comes before the council.
Well, ma'am, that, that, that's understood.
So if I understand your question correctly, or your comment correctly, Councilmember Jamison, that anything brought to us referencing these documents in the presentations, they would be referenced as documentation, going back to our approval of these documents today.
Right, and improving, and approving these documents, we're not approving carte blanche, do whatever you want to, it's okay. You come back to us with your project, you come back to us with the item.
Right, and in fact, in, in item four A, that, that's the PSA, the project-specific agreement that has to be executed in accordance with this MCIP agreement they were looking at in four A. So nothing can be done under the MCIP, sorry for using these acronyms, I just got educated tonight reading all this stuff. Yeah, anything we execute under the MCIP is going to be done with a project-specific agreement, a PSA, which is going to delineate and, and specifically define all that work with this is the background document authorizing the execution of a PSA. Hope I got that right, Greg. Got it, okay, okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and then move on. The first thing that we have is briefing from Lauren Sanchez, our Regional Emergency Management Coordinator. And she's going to give us an update on the winter storm. Yep, there she is, Lauren, good to see you. The floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hopefully you guys can hear me, if you can't, then wave your hand and let me know, I'm getting some knots. Okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Sanchez. I'm the Regional Emergency Management Operations Coordinator for the City of Duncanville, De Soto, Cedar Hill and Lancaster. And tonight I'm going to brief you on the city's response to winter storm Yuri and the after-action review that took place after the event. Next slide, please. Thank you. So winter storm Yuri took place, as all of you are familiar, over about a week and a half in February. Oh, sorry, go back one slide, we're one slide ahead. Perfect, thank you. Over the dates of the 12th through the 20th, as most of you know and are aware, the effects of the storm continued long after that end date of February 20th. This storm was unprecedented, especially for the state of Texas. We had dangerously cold temperatures, snow, ice, and then coupled with power failure and water outages across the state of Texas, but also across the city of Duncanville. The city was very busy during this period of time. And just to briefly give you a summary of some of the activities that occurred, city facilities closed to the public for a couple of days, which led to many city employees working remotely from home. The city coordinated its response and immediate recovery efforts through daily virtual coordination calls. The city also treated roads and bridges, they responded to water shut-offs and repairs. They maintained the city's water levels through the use of emergency generators, keeping fuel to those generators running, which was a successful endeavor and resulted in the city avoiding having to issue a water boil notice, unlike many of our counterparts across the state of Texas. Next slide, please. So after the event ended, the city manager's office decided to get together representatives from the various city departments that were involved in the winter storm response and recovery to complete what is called an after-action review. An after-action review for this event was conducted on February 24th. And it's basically a meeting where everybody comes together to discuss what happened during the event, what went well during the event, and then what didn't go so well and how we can fix that for next time. And the whole goal of that meeting is to put together a report to identify all of those things so that the next time we have a similar event to this, hopefully, nothing as bad as we had. But if something happens again, then we are better prepared for that response. And you can see in this table, some of the participants who were in that meeting. Next slide, please. Thank you. So now we're going to review the findings. We're going to start with what worked well, and you'll be surprised to know that it's very hard to get that out of people. We had everyone in the room together and said, okay, what went well? People tend to focus on what didn't go well, but it's just as important to recognize the things that did go well, to make sure that the next time we have an event, we also do the same things to ensure that that response goes as smoothly. So the first thing that we identified was that the communication among departments and employees went well. So the interim city manager made decisions in a very timely fashion, and those were successfully communicated from the top of the department down to the field staff crews who were out in the field. So everyone was on the same page about what was going on and what was needed. Next, the emergency readiness for the city, and this was attributed to regular emergency management trainings for the emergency operations center staff throughout the city. Next was the technologies, the technology that the city recently put in place last year because of COVID. So COVID taught us that we had to learn how to work remotely, similar to this format here. And so we already had a lot of the technology in place that allowed city employees to work from home during this winter weather event. Next was employee housing accommodations. This was a unique one to this storm. So a lot of employees couldn't safely drive from their house to work because of the treacherous road conditions. So the city, very early on in the disaster, secured local hotel rooms so that employees could come to work, stay locally overnight, and then respond to work the next day, which proved very beneficial to the people who use those rooms. Next was the integrity of the city's water system. That was attributed to well-trained city employees, the ability to activate those emergency generators, keep fuel to those generators running so that the city's water system stayed online. Next was the road treatment for ice and snow using sand and salt. The city was successfully able to manage the inventory of those so that they didn't run out during the duration of that very long event. And also the city had plans in place that identified areas to sand and salt ahead of time, and staff stuck to those plans and were able also to respond to any problem areas that were identified by first responders who were out and about in the city during that week and a half. And then lastly, the city's ability to respond to resident events. So departments stayed very in tune to what residents needed. They followed very closely on social media to, to identify any concerns that residents had. They also worked very closely with apartment complexes who had large power and water outages, and then worked really hard to fill those gaps as best possible. So a prime example being the city securing the large quantity of drinking water and then distributing that water to residents during that distribution event. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the findings of areas for improvement. And with each challenge that we identified in that after-action review, we also had to come up with a recommendation on how to fix that challenge for the next time. So the first one was that the city's phone tree system was quickly overwhelmed by residents calling with concerns, with questions, needing to speak to someone. And we realized that the phone tree system was a little too complicated. It took too many options to get a real person on the phone to talk to. So the city recognized that the next time we would set up a hotline number or even a call center so that residents could more quickly get in touch with somebody on the phone. Next was the coordination or communication among field staff. So field staff were spread very thin across the entire city for extended periods of time, and it's a little difficult for them to communicate because really the only option they had was cell phones. So we talked about creating a citywide communication system, perhaps push-to-talk, maybe deployable radios so they can better communicate when in the field. The next thing was that we didn't have enough generators, and the generators we had were not high-capacity enough to power entire buildings that we needed to stay online. So the generators that we had across city facilities and city infrastructure weren't high-capacity enough. They only powered certain lights, certain outlets. So we realized we had some gaps that, that we had to fill for generators. Next was unusable vehicles and equipment due to frozen components. So we learned that even though we do live in Texas, we do need to winterize some of our vehicles and equipment in case this happens again. We also talked about building a small inventory of supplies that we could use in winter weather events like tire chains and acquiring more four-wheel vehicles for the city. And then looking at expanding some storage at the service center so that we can move more vehicles and supplies indoors to get them out of the elements. Next was, we had some radio infrastructure issues that affected the police and fire communication that week. And so we are going to work closely with the dispatch center that maintains that maintenance agreement and schedule for that radio infrastructure. We also had a lack of staffing for all the tasks that we needed to accomplish that week. Like we mentioned before, it was hard for some people to travel to get to work, which led to a manpower issue. So a way that we recommend to address that is to redefine our essential versus non-essential personnel list and then adding some language in job descriptions that lets employees know that in the event of an emergency like this one, employees might be tasked to other duties as assigned to fill gaps in various departments. Employees happily did it during the winter weather event. They went and helped other departments, but we didn't have any language that identified that currently. Next was the operation of a shelter or a warming center. The city did not open a shelter or a warming center for a few reasons. The first being the lack of manpower available to staff, a center for our residents. And also, we did not have a facility with backup power that we knew was going to stay online, given the rolling brownouts for the state. So a way that we would address that is coordinating with the best Southwest cities to operate a regional center so that we can share manpower, supplies and facilities. Sorry, forgetting to breathe, so I'm running out of air. Okay, and then the last one was that we did not have a location established for field workers in the crew to go and take a break. So field workers, while they were working, had to eat in their vehicles, take a break in their vehicles. So we decided that we need to set up a location where they can come, get warm, sit down, enjoy a meal, and then go back out to work. Next slide, please. Okay, next, we're going, the last thing we're going to talk about are the action items. So when we identified challenges, we also had to identify things that we could tangibly do to address those challenges. And that's where these action items come in. So the first action item is to provide additional training to city staff or city technology, specifically the phone system. And we also want to look at securing a city training facility or partnering with outside agencies like the Duncanville School District to use some of their facilities so that we have a location to train staff. The second is acquiring emergency generators of varying capacities and then having, sorry, setting those up at the facilities that currently need them. The third thing was redefining essential versus non-essential personnel. And then we also talked about perhaps creating a third term that would delineate non-essential employees who become essential during emergencies like this, so that we have more manpower to pull from in these events. The next item is providing technology to those essential employees who were working from home but didn't have the technology in place to successfully complete their tasks. So we realized that there are a few people who are missing some technology needed, and so we'll fill those gaps so that they're able to work from home successfully in the future if needed. The next one is to continue the emergency management training for city personnel through the emergency management center training. And we've learned that we can do that virtually in a format like this. So we will do that until we can safely get everybody together in one room and train again. And then the last thing is to foster a better regional partnership and communication between the best Southwest cities. And that would address some of those other, sorry, multiple of those issues that we previously talked about. So looking at our radio contract through our dispatch center, working on joint sheltering efforts, et cetera. You'll also notice that on this table, on the right side, each of these action items is assigned to a department or in most of the cases to multiple departments. And we did that so that we knew who to talk to, either emergency management or the city manager's office knows who to talk to to get status updates on these items. And then once they are completed, then we can check them off and we know we're in a better state to prepare, or sorry, to respond to the next emergency. Next slide, please. Okay, well, perfect, well, that's the end of the presentation. So I just want to thank you for your time, and I will now open it up for questions.
Okay.
Councilwoman Jamison has her hand up.
Okay, could you go back to that last slide? I believe it was about human resource policy on employees taking vacation time instead of coming into work during emergencies. What does the policy say now?
If HR is on the line, I will defer to you so that I don't incorrectly speak. But there currently was not language in the policy that talked about this. So when we're having this conversation, we didn't decide in the after-action review exactly what that language would say, but we identified that we, we should put something in there to that effect, that addresses if we have an emergency and you are an essential employee, and if you don't come to work, choose not to come to work, can't come to work, what do we do then?
Are you saying rather than take vacation? You don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Councilwoman, I conducted the conversation for our team, and the discussion was, we had some employees that although you were classified as essential and were needed to come to work, they, given the conditions of the road, actually refused to come to work. And so it created a problem for us, as some did and some did not. And we realized that there was no policy to address, what do you do if you are established as an essential employee and you absolutely refuse to come to work?
So this policy is being reviewed as, as we speak, then there is.
Reviewed and developed, there is not a current policy.
Okay, so it's defined as, as a deficiency at this moment?
Yes.
And it's not really what they'll do, it's what the city will do if they refuse to come during an emergency.
Right, right, okay. I saw Mr. Cooks, I saw your hand.
I had one more question I wanted to.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
Okay, and the other thing was that because of COVID and the way they had set it up, I was under the impression that most people could work from home.
Yes, most people were able to successfully work from home. On this point about providing remote access, we realized that there were a few employees, actually in this case, who were considered non-essential. So during COVID, they, they, we didn't think they had to be set up to work from home. During COVID, they weren't working from home, they weren't performing those tasks where they needed technology. But then when the winter storm hit and nobody could come to work, so more people were staying home. They were given more tasks that typically they weren't given. So and then in that case, then we, they realized that they didn't have the tools to work from home. So those are the gaps that'll be filled.
Okay.
Okay.
Except for like digging, digging like the parks, I can't imagine, because we made sure, I thought most of the employees could work from, from home. I mean, I understand that probably park people and people that are outdoors.
Correct, this isn't going to give technology to people who don't need it. There was just, for example, administrative assistance in, in this case. So during the winter storm, they had to work from home, they couldn't come to work. But they were able to help track the overtime. They were actually helping field calls from the public, but they didn't have a city phone. So in this case, we realized that we should have a system in place where they can transfer their phones from their office, for example, to their cell phone so that they can help in that regard. So, yes, ma'am.
I get it, okay, yeah, because I was thinking, what?
No, not everyone, it'll just be those who need it, who currently don't have it, will then be given access to those technologies.
Yes, and I do agree that, because I, I think I can probably speak for most of the council people. I know I received a lot of phone calls from citizens, and so we were fielding the calls that you didn't get.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barrett Cruz and Mr. Cooks.
Okay, thank, thank you, mayor.
Mr. Barrett Cruz first, Mr. Barrett Cruz first, then Mr. Cooks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, first of all, say thanks to the city staff. I mean, they did an incredible job, but more specifically, I know that, again, like Councilmember Jamison stated, we took a lot of phone calls, and there was a lot of upset folks that we didn't have a shelter warming station. And so I wanted to speak to that because I did work at the one that Dallas provided at the K Bailey Hutchinson Center. And I can just tell you that it was a 24-hour operation, and they had to have a lot of security because you had a lot of different walks of life come in there, from families to homeless folks to just, just a little bit of everybody that obviously wanted to be warm, and that, and that was fine, but there was an awful lot of security. Secondly, the food and water, I mean, it was a constant train of, of not only picking up the trash and the garbage, but also providing food and water. And then our biggest problem, probably for us, had we hosted that, is bathrooms. Because we were at the convention center, they were able to rotate shutting down, disemp. Because we were at the convention center, they were able to rotate, shutting down, disinfecting and resupplying the bathrooms. And that was a 24/7 operation in itself. And so, you know, just going back to that, I know there were some residents that were not happy that we did not open one up. But it takes an awful lot of manpower, which we did not have to do that. And then the last thing is the medical staff. We had paramedics there 24 hours a day. And then volunteers coming in and out. So I just wanted to speak to that. It was something that was heavily talked about during the storm and after, and I just wanted to give my input on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bear Cruz. Mr. Cooks?
Okay, yeah, I want to thank, first, I want to thank you, Lauren, for this presentation. I think this is well-written out, well-thought-out by staff and city managers. And I guess I'll add to one of your things that did well. I think staff did a great job in communicating to council as much as they could, as often as they could, what was going on. So I want to make sure we pin that on you of saying that you guys did it really well in communicating back to us. And then I guess other things of recognition of staff period that participated. I think next time we can also think about how we can continue to recognize staff. I think Bart or Greg, one of them, told us about a young gentleman who, I think one of our youngest volunteers or staff members, who drove around looking for helping and assisting staff. So just ways to recognition of those staff members that, who came in to help. I do want to just talk about opportunities for just a second. And that is, I would hope, as we talk about volunteers, that we can think about setting up some emergency volunteers for this in the future, if there's emergency volunteers, whatever they can do without putting us at any liability, that we can help the emergency volunteers to help if needed. And we can call on them like we call on our emergency folks anyway. So I would ask that we consider having some emergency volunteers set up. And then, oh, then also the partnership with the churches. I know, I love that you talked about the best Southwest and how you guys were partnering together with the best Southwest. But we had some local churches that did have power in our city that we could probably think about, how could we partner with some of our local churches that could even become a warming station for our staff, since we couldn't do the entire city? So some of the churches have volunteered for that. And I'll be glad to give you those two names of those churches later if you'd like, if that's something you guys want to consider. And then last, I have a question, Lauren. We had some action items. Is there a timeline that you're going to put on that? I didn't see any timelines. I do see that you've made an action line. Is there a timeline that you're going to come back and put to that later? Or is that something you're going to direct now?
There are timelines on there and on the actual report that was written. So the slides that I prepared for tonight are really just screen grabs of the actual plan that we wrote. And in that plan, there were timelines next to all of those, and I took them out just to not complicate things here. And now I regret that decision and I should have left them there.
No, no, no.
But yes, there are timelines. They're a little giving, right? So it's not just a couple of days, you have a couple of weeks, a couple of months to get those. Because as you saw, some of those are going to take time and coordination among various departments. But yes, sir, there are timelines. And so that's what we'll use when we touch base with those different departments to see where they are on the status and see if they need an extension of that timeline. But we are using those to get all of those done.
No, no, you don't have to regret it at all. You did a great presentation with it. Now that you're telling me you have timelines, thank you for that. That was just a question, but you had the answer. So that was, that was good enough. So thank you very much for presenting this presentation. I was wondering where we're going to get it. If I had to add one little piece, and that is, if we could get a little bit sooner, if you could, that would be great. But great presentation and thank you for sharing it today.
Yeah, thank you so much. Now we know if we have another event, hopefully not soon. But if we have one, then we'll come sooner to council to present you with the after-action findings. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, I had a couple of, oh, okay, Mr. McNabb, go ahead and I'll save my comments till the end. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did want to commend the staff because I know that they put in a lot of hard hours in that line. And it is good that we have this report and stuff. And not to discount what Mr. Cook said, but we really haven't met. So it's kind of hard to get a report timely when we haven't quite met. So I want to thank you for doing that and I want to thank the city for what they've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments or, you know, Mr. Cooks did touch on something I had written down in terms of an update that we do hope that you and staff would keep us updated on when those things are actually being approached or even approved, especially the generator capacity. I know I had multiple conversations with staff during those days when we found out that the generators were not capable and weren't even designed, weren't even specced out to handle the HVAC in the fire station, in the police department and in city hall. You know, as you said, Lauren, some of those things were specced out to, we have generator capacity going to specific outlets. You know, so it's an enormous learning experience to go through something like this. So particularly if we are going to acquire additional generator capacity, that's going to be a funding issue. And I know those puppies aren't cheap. So, you know, we'll be looking forward to hearing something in terms of when those estimates are found and what we're going to be looking at, that those do come back to us as council. My final comment is that bandwidth is now being considered infrastructure. And this is not just at our level, all the way up to congressional level. In transportation and infrastructure, bandwidth is now part of national infrastructure. So I'm wondering, as we continue to embark on more and more virtual meetings, regardless of whether it's city council, I mean, I participate in several virtual meetings a week. And then at times, based on what pops up, all of a sudden I'll see something saying that, you know, bandwidth is being restricted or something like that. And that means either my bandwidth at home is not capable of handling all the stuff coming through or that providers are throttling down data. And I know that that can happen as well. So my concern or question maybe, when you folks get together to talk about it again, is does the city in city hall, police and fire, do we actually have sufficient bandwidth? Or do we need to increase the bandwidth coming into our city so that all those people that end up possibly having to work from home by necessity, that we can handle that bandwidth and not get throttled down ourselves? Sitting off of provider, you know, ATT, Spectrum, Verizon, if they throttle down, that's one thing. We fight about that. But we shouldn't have to go to the extent that something is happening internally that we don't have enough bandwidth, that our system is throttling us down. And that means that we're not able to function efficiently in a virtual mode during a crisis, during an emergency. So I just throw that out on the table for the experts and our staff to take a look at that and something to think about when we get there. And also I'll echo that this, you know, as we said many, many times, this was unprecedented. We've never gone through anything like this before. It was an hour-by-hour emergency crisis management situation. Like, what do we do? I don't know. We'll have to think about it. Well, I'll get back to you. Give me 10 minutes. I'll come up with some, you know, we'll see what we can do. And that was kind of like what Mr. Bear Cruz was talking about in terms of the warming station. Several conversations I had with the interim assistant city manager, like, can we, can't we? What are the issues? Why can't we do a warming station? And the answers were very simple. Staff. To do what Mr. Bear Cruz delineated in terms of the activities, it's not just inviting somebody to come in. Do we have a cop for them to lay down? Uh-uh. It's infrastructure. When you're talking about restrooms, you're talking about sanitation, you're talking about food, you're talking about all the security. That's infrastructure delineation that we've never had to even think about before. Yeah, and I know that one of our sister cities, the Best Southwest Partnership, opened up a city warming station, but eventually closed it because they couldn't handle it. They found out that this was bigger than they even imagined themselves. You know, and going along with Mr. Cooks's comment on some churches, I talked to some of our churches as well. And they said, Mayor, we'd love to, but we can't handle it. So this is, this is a citywide partnership, not just among our cities, but among our staff and among our entire community for those warming stations. And you may remember that I did have a conversation with Councilmember Casey Thomas from the city of Dallas. And he and I had a conversation about the city of Dallas did locate tour buses. You know, the big fancy ones with restrooms out at the Mountain Creek Park, was Park of the Woods, I guess. And, you know, that was a citywide thing and we passed that information on to our citizens as well. So yes, an event, we hope we never have to go through it again. But on the other side, it's quite possible that something like this could happen again, not with cold, but with heat. And, you know, there again, so we need two different emergency action plans, one for cold and one for heat. And not just drought, because I know we've got one in place for drought. You know what happens when we don't have water? Stuff that, when we as a council look at this and say, I am so blessed. We are so blessed to have a staff with the expertise and the experience. And if they don't have the expertise and experience, they know how to get it. They know how to get to the resources, whether it's through other cities or whether it's through Austin or even having to go to Congress if we have to do something like that. You know, go back to one of your very first slides, Lauren. On the 15th of April, just a matter of days ago, Governor Abbott issued another proclamation about emergency assistance from FEMA for individuals that are still suffering hardship as a result of Yuri. So this is ongoing, it's continuing. Don't put, you can't say that this is going to be put in our back pocket. Because when the governor sees this and puts out another proclamation, they say that FEMA is continuing, that's how important this is. So Lauren, I know that you are out and about all the time and doing an exemplary job. So we, as a council, on behalf of our entire council, I know they've said it, but, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it and all you've done very, very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, another very, very important item coming up. Item B, July 4th. Some discussions necessary on this one. And so Bart, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
What's yours?
Prior to COVID, I don't think anyone would argue that the July 4th Independence Day celebration is our single largest, most popular event held in Duncanville every year. And I know there was a lot of disappointment that we had to cancel the 2020 event. Now there's equally as much anticipation, I guess, for the 2021 event. And due to magnitude, the size of the event, the planning it takes to put on an event like this, staff's been working for a couple of months, putting together a viable plan that we want to talk about tonight and get some further direction from the council so we can finalize our planning efforts. Next slide, please. So I guess the most basic question, and we made an assumption here, is we need to verify that the city of Duncanville will be hosting an event on July 4th this year for Independence Day. I will share with you that we have been monitoring the other cities in the DFW area. Most cities have already said they will be doing some type of event, but they don't know just what level they're going to be doing those events at this time. Garland is the only city I'm aware of that has canceled their event. And Flower Round is the only city that's come out and said they're doing a full bore, full-on event with full participation. At the time of the, put the presentation together, Lancaster and DeSoto, which as you're aware, does a joint event every year. It will be held in Lancaster this year. They said they will be moving forward with their event, but hadn't decided on the specifics yet. However, I spoke to Chris Glover with the city of DeSoto late this afternoon. And they have decided they're going forward with a full event on Sunday, July 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So that'll be a full event in Lancaster on Sunday, July 4th. So I guess before I move forward, I want to verify that, I guess from the council, that yes, you want to do some type of an event here in Duncanville for July 4th.
What about a parade from Lancaster, DeSoto, Mark?
They do not do a parade. They just have an evening event.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I guess, yes, the council wants to do an event. Is that accurate?
Yes, so may I am.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll move forward then on the next slide. And that is the fact that this year in 2021, July 4th falls on a Sunday, which causes an issue for our parade. We have several churches on our parade route that will be in session. And a lot of those churches are now going back to in-person services, I think starting in June, from what I understand. So that is an issue for our spectators along the routes. One, there's obviously church going on at the same time. But also we utilize their parking lots for our spectators to park in, which causes an issue. So I'll also share with you now that the last time that July 4th fell on Sunday was July, also was 2010. And Officer Doug Sisk informed me that at that time, they moved the parade to Saturday and had their event on Sunday night. So I guess at this point, before I move forward, if we do a parade, are you guys okay with moving that to Saturday?
Bart, this is Don. And, I mean, historically, is that the parade is, if it falls, 4th of July falls on Sunday, the parade has always been on Saturday, as Officer Sisk mentioned. And that is the plan. If we're going to do this, the parade will be on Saturday from Alliance Club perspective.
Any other inputs from council on the parade? Let's just talk about parade for the moment.
I'd agree with Saturday.
Yeah. Is it okay with Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Bart, I think we've got concurrence for a parade on Saturday. You know, looking at the information that was provided to us in the package ahead of time, I guess it's a staffing issue.
Yeah, that's the next slide, and we get to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
What staff is concerned about, and this was, is that if we have an event on Saturday morning for the parade and then we have the event for the fireworks on Sunday evening, getting volunteers and outside officers that we use for the evening event, as well as our regular city staff, to have to work two days, may be an issue. We don't know that for sure. But it could be an issue. And I also wanted to share with you at the bottom of this slide, an additional concern that popped up when we talked to our entertainment, David Whiteman Band, they are not available Saturday, July 3rd. So if we were to move the event, the evening event to Saturday, July 3rd, then we have talked to the Inspiration Band. And Inspiration Band is a band that was used by the city of DeSoto last year for their Best Southwest Juneteenth online event. And they're a great band. They are available Saturday. And the David Whiteman Band has agreed that if we do move it to the 3rd, we would just move them to the 2022 July 4th event.
Well, I want to jump in there then on those two entertainers. The David Whiteman Band also performed for Lancaster, DeSoto, I think a year or two ago. And they're just a not standing band, so I hope we take that into consideration on July, using, coming up on July 4th. It's just a great band. I think everybody would enjoy it.
What do you got on the next slide, Bart?
The next slide is talking about the capacity.
Okay.
Just let everyone know, we hand out 12,000 bands.
Time out, time out, time out. Let's go back and talk about the date of the fireworks, because, you know, we're talking now one versus two events. And I think this is where we're at, right here on this particular slide. So we've already got concurrence that we're going to do the parade on the 3rd. Now we need to talk about doing the fireworks on the 4th or doing it on the 3rd. I think we need to make that decision before we move any further. So I'm looking for some input. My personal feeling, you know, looking at it from just a citizen, is that we ought to have fireworks on July 4th, which makes this a two-day event. And yes, I see the bullet, you know, staff is concerned about getting volunteers. Is it such a deep concern that we should give strong consideration to doing fireworks on the 3rd versus the 4th? And so I'm, you know, as I said, my personal opinion, I understand the concern for staffing, but in terms of what our citizens and just people look for, the 4th of July But in terms of what our citizens and just people look for, the Fourth of July is a, is the day that we kind of celebrate this stuff. So I'm opening up to council to, uh, to give your inputs on, on this particular one in terms of fireworks on the fourth or fireworks on the third, that's the issue. Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and again, I will go from a historical perspective, they've all been a one-day event. And, and, and so therefore I would lean with everything being done on July third.
Okay, thank you. Any other input? Yes, Mr. Jameson, uh, we'll go to Jameson, we'll go to Jameson, Veracruz, Cooks, Jameson, Veracruz, Cooks.
Okay. Okay, uh, I agree, I think everything should be done on the third, that way, uh, staff is in place and we're not interfering with the churches. And, uh, you know, I was kind of thinking, I'm sure that most of us have had to, you know, change the day we celebrated birthdays, Christmases, all sorts of things to accommodate, uh, family and friends that were out of town or whatever, couldn't, couldn't be there on that exact day. So it, it only makes sense to me that, um, we do the parade and then we have the, the fireworks. Um, that night, and that way, we could accommodate everybody.
Okay, got it. Mr. Veracruz.
Yes, sir, I think, uh, only one day would be best.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, I think only one day, but also still think July, well, no, I don't, I'm sorry. I think July fourth, uh, for the fireworks, seeing that it is July four. And then our sister cities that you said, mentioned, also have their on July four. It breaks up the crowd a little bit more. And I know our next slide will talk about how we, a certain amount that can go out anyway. But July fourth just spreads it out amongst the whole, the best southwest. So whether we, uh, I understand that the parade could be late, we also could be later in that day on Sunday, maybe after church is done. But I would still say July fourth.
Okay, any other inputs? Yeah, Mr. Harvey.
I would like to see everything done on one day, Saturday, July the third.
Okay, Monty, I saw your hand up.
One day, all in one day.
Right, okay. Well, the, uh, the consensus is overwhelmingly for one day. And moving it that way, I believe we understand, you know, Mark and I would like two days, we're the only two that would like two days. Understanding that's, you know, it is a staffing and a, and a big concern issue. And as Mark did say, you know, there's a possibility of holding the parade on Sunday afternoon. Then the can, my comment to that is, it's in the heat of the day, it's in the beginning of July. And, uh, the possibility of some of our citizens and children that are attending the parade getting heat stroke and so on and so forth is probably a little too dangerous to have a, an afternoon, um, an afternoon parade. So I guess we've got it, uh, that we will do it on a, on a one-day event, and that would be on July third. So Bart, you got that?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you.
All right, council, thank you very much.
Our last slide.
Okay.
And then, um, the last little bit, if I need from you guys is that are you guys okay with us having the full distribution of twelve thousand wristbands, which provides usually about eight to nine thousand folks who actually attend the event within the park? Um, or would we like to somehow reduce that number to reduce the number of people in the park for social distancing? I will share with you that in my, in my, my experience, um, you know, it gets really, really, really crowded around the amphitheater area where the band's playing for sure. But there are areas that we could spread out if we needed to or wanted to, um, to help with the social distancing. But I'll leave that decision up to you guys, whether you think we should limit the number of wristbands further than twelve thousand.
My thoughts on this, Bart, is between now and, and, well, it's like, when do we have to make a decision on how to order wristbands? Uh, because we're in the middle of April, we don't know how this, how COVID is going to be operating when we come into, uh, into mid-June. Uh, if, if we have to order wristbands, I like mid-June to be available for the beginning of July. Can we wait to make a decision on this, or do you have to have something right now?
Well, we can always order the full twelve thousand now, and whether we actually distribute all twelve thousand can be changed at any time in the future. Uh, always, you know, reuse whatever we don't use this year for next year. Um, so that's why not an issue. We will start distributing the wristbands typically though, the second week, second, yeah, the second week of June, you know, for this event.
So, you know, what?
We need a decision by the end of May.
Okay, so what's happening in our nation is that as, how should I put this? As restrictions are being relaxed, people are looking more and more for the ability to get back to the freedoms that they enjoyed before COVID. And you can see it, just go, you know, go to the shopping centers and go out and try and drive on I twenty on a Saturday or Sunday. I mean, people aren't just, they're just, it, the roads are packed with people just get out saying, I am free, you know, uh, to get out and do things like I used to. So I'm kind of leaning toward, let's see how things look as, as we get, uh, in, into June. I'd really like to be able to get as many people that want to come to be able to come, rather than restricting the attendance. Uh, that's just my opinion at this point in time, which of course is based on the perspective of what's happening today. Uh, yeah, uh, Don, I saw your hand up.
Thank you again, Mayor. And, uh, along the same lines that you're talking about, the cost of the event, the wristbands are, are a, a minor cost to the event. The event's going to cost the same amount, whether we have, uh, six thousand or nine thousand there. So, uh, my suggestion is to plan on having for twelve, for twelve thousand distribution and, and forward.
Kind of the way I'm leaning, yeah. Any other inputs for Bart? Uh, yeah, Mr. Cook, Mr. Cooks.
More staff, Bart, with, with those different numbers, additional staff with those different numbers?
There'd be additional security staff, correct.
And, and you, and we, and we have the staff to support it?
Well, we, we, we provide, we bring in outside security staff, um, so we just need to know that a ballpark now. Plan on twelve thousand now, we'll plan on just a full event. And then if we need to scale back towards, as it gets closer, then we can do that. But if you say right now, just go ahead and get twelve thousand bands, we'll go ahead and start planning for the full event. And then if we pull back at some point, then we can, um, reduce our numbers that we need.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Joe, I saw your hand up.
Uh, yes, sir, I was gonna say the same thing, yeah, let's plan for the full thing and then throttle it back if we have to. But at least that way we have everything in place. And, uh, with the COVID shots going on, the vaccinations, as things progress, we'll see, uh, see what we need to do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think, uh, I think we've got some good information consensus on that for you, Bart. You okay?
Yes, sir, thank you all for your time tonight.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, item C is a discussion regarding mission of two classes, two classified civil service positions to the police department. Interim Police Chief Mark LeVigne, Chief, you're up.
How are you, Mayor and Council? Uh, thank you for allowing me to discuss this item tonight. Um, we haven't been in this position in quite a number of years, and so I, I choose to look at it. Problem, but, uh, we'll get through this and, uh, see what your thoughts are as we get through it. Uh, next slide. And the next one. So since two thousand and nine, uh, we've lost two positions. Mainly those positions were due to, um, not having the staff initially to fill our SRO responsibilities in the school. And we started to scale back and we've gone from sixty-two to where we are now at sixty authorized sworn positions. Next slide. So this slide shows us from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, um, our, our staffing as, as it was on January first of each year. Now, the red line, you'll see, those are fully trained officers. The blue line is what we actually had on the books. So there's a little bit of a gap from, you know, hiring somebody and training them. It's, it's about a ten-month gap if they don't have, already have a certification, which in most cases is the case. So as you can see, that line runs, uh, pretty consistently as, as we make it through these, these years. Uh, next slide. So where are we currently, uh, with, with what we try to do at this point? On the left-hand side of the screen, you, you kind of see the breakdown where we have personnel throughout the department that are sworn. And then on the right side of the screen, I, I show kind of currently where we are. Currently, we have two vacancies. I will tell you that since our last test on the third of April, uh, we did produce a list thirteen. Uh, we already have two that we believe are very good candidates. And, um, we have a little bit more processing with them, so we're hoping those two vacancies soon will not be vacancies at all. Um, the next, uh, foot there shows five cadets in training, academy training. In actuality, uh, we had three cadets graduate their respective academy last Friday. And they are a very good bunch, and we're very excited to have them. They are in service now and will soon begin their FTO training. The patrol staffing currently is down by six. Uh, we're looking to implement again, uh, as we have some years back, a deployment team, which would work, um, as it has in the past, to address crime hotspots as well as quality of life issues. Um, and now we also have an opportunity to, um, work on a regional basis with the city of DeSoto and the city of Cedar Hill on a mental health team. They recently obtained a grant, um, and that is gearing up. So they're having to build that from infrastructure, um, from the, from the ground up. So it is likely, as I was told recently, that the funding to access our participation via grant funds in that process will likely not be available until March or April of twenty-two. But that is a great opportunity, because we as police departments across this country are being asked to respond in different ways to individuals and citizens who are, uh, you know, suffering from a, a mental episode or a mental crisis. And we are trying to address that need. Next slide. So this slide shows us an increase, um, from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, uh, in calls for ser- police service. Um, and these are calls, they may not all be, you know, turn out to be reports or offenses, but they're calls that at least one of our officers and many times numerous officers have to respond to. Now, I show twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, because quite honestly, twenty twenty is an outlier because of COVID. And some of those numbers just, just didn't seem to make sense. So we're going off the best trend that we can at this point. Next slide. So here we see our response times in relation to staffing. And, um, on the right side, you see where I have listed sworn personnel in twenty nineteen down through twenty seventeen. Uh, parenthetically, again, are those numbers that we had on the books. But outside the parentheses, you'll see the effective staffing that we had throughout the Department of Sworn Personnel. So as we look back at the graph, in twenty seventeen, you know, our response time, and the response times are good still today. If you compare them to average response times to the different types of priorities throughout the country, which, you know, about five or six minutes, um, in general, depending on the type of priority as defined. But twenty seventeen is, is better than either eighteen or nineteen. Now, we do start to see a lag up to twenty nineteen, but then we start to gain that on the P two responses, um, back a little bit. So it is still a correlation, uh, you know, what you would think of a natural correlation as you're seeing what we actually effectively had on the streets at the time. So, um, I, I, I think this slide still makes sense, so next slide. Now, one of the things that you might take note of is in twenty nineteen, that was an incredible amount of vehicular stops that we made. Um, especially compared to seventeen and eighteen. You know, in twenty seventeen, during that calendar year, we lost two hundred, uh, years of police service that largely to retirement. Each organization, whether a police organization or any other organization, you know, as well as a neighborhood or, or anything else, has an evolution. Um, in twenty seventeen, we just lost a lot of folks. Twenty nineteen, when you look at that number and you think back to the previous slide, you know, there may have been many times when an officer who needed to respond, or multiple officers at the same time, who may have needed to respond to a call that was just coming in, was actually on a traffic stop. Now, if you think this through a lot logistically, uh, if you're pulled over on traffic by a police officer, uh, that, that officer who hears that radio traffic and thinks, I need to respond to that call because it's a higher priority than, you know, this traffic stop that I have right now. They cannot just say, okay, I'm done and I'm leaving. They at least have to go back up to the car, provide the information or the driver's license or whatever they may have already gathered from the motorist and say, hey, look, don't do that anymore. I gotta get your lucky day, or, you know, however they might state that. So that may account for some of the lag in nineteen as well. Next slide, please. So our crashes and invest, crash investigations and arrests, as you'll see, you know, they've kind of leveled and even decreased, uh, from seventeen to nineteen as far as, uh, crash investigations. Um, but with regard to arrest, they've increased. I'll tell you, they've drastically decreased for twenty nineteen. I don't have that number in front of me tonight, but they, they have, as you might imagine, uh, imagine, as alluded to earlier. But again, that's something else that takes us away from, uh, you know, a call if we all of a sudden get several high priority calls that take at least two officers to respond to. Next slide. All right, so cases assigned to detectives. Now, we, we have seen a steady decline here. There was a period of time we had a detective, uh, from the latter part of twenty eighteen into twenty nineteen, I believe, that, uh, retired from our department. And for a while, because of our staffing, we were not able to put another individual in a detective spot. So we just left that open. So our investigative staff and their ability to, uh, do well regard, with regards to the number of cases they cleared and, and the time in which they cleared them, satisfactorily did slip a little bit. We have since filled that detective position, and we're trying to be very cognizant of how, as we increase our staffing, how we do that and be, and be very deliberate about doing so, so that we're not, we're kind of walking that through the department, not just patrol and not just in other areas, but we're being cognizant of that. Uh, next slide, please. So again, what has changed, uh, today, uh, from the time that we lost the positions that we lost? Well, I alluded to the fact that the major fact was that we, the decision was made is because our staffing levels couldn't support the SRO positions. And so the school district made, uh, decisions that they needed to make. And right now, staffing levels are almost, as I mentioned, to current authorization. So there are new demands in policing. Uh, as we attempt to approach those and, and address those demands, we're trying to find new ways to, uh, respond, to be more responsible to our citizens. Um, the department also just last September began to offering VIN inspections, vehicle identification number inspections. Those are needed when someone brings a vehicle from out of state, uh, and, and they're trying to. uh, and and they're trying to register it for the first time in the state of Texas. Or if there are some question about whether a VIN or registration is actually valid. There are only so uh, several hundred officers throughout the entire state who can actually do these inspections. And we have two of them working uh, for our department. Now, this is incredible service to the citizens. We have a waitlist for months to get uh, these inspections done. And we're using uh, our trained individuals. We have one from patrol currently and one from uh, our detective or investigative staff. And they do about three hours a week and and to this. So they're not dedicated to this. We're not necessarily asking to dedicate anybody specifically to this and take them from their primary positions. But we we may extend, given the need, to um, maybe training a couple of more individuals to do these. First year revenue is likely to be over twenty thousand dollars to the city in fees. Um, we're looking to better our response time by our patrol officers. Uh, that gives them time to engage on the call they're on to give a better service and not just go call to call. Um, we at some point would look to add an additional detective position. Uh, we've recently added or reestablished uh, the park officer. And um, you know, it's a big retention item as well. It allows for our folks to have a little bit of career development and to be better rounded from seeing a case from time a report is taken to the time um, you know, a detective sees it through uh, trial. And so I I think it gives us a better uh, and well-rounded officer. Next slide. So the first year cost of adding two police officers, that's the big question. And it's and those are big numbers. Um, I I reached out to HR and got some of this and and we had some of these numbers um, for equipment and processing, you know, on our own. So with processing and equipment, that that number's pretty constant, whether they're certified or or with no experience. Um, the training, if they have no experience, we have to send them to a basic police academy. Sometimes if they're certified, we still do that depending on what we feel their level of understanding is. Um, but we try not to. Um, salary, HR cost, bonus. Um, if it if it's there, we give currently, we give for no experience, we give a twenty-five hundred dollar sign uh, sign-on bonus. And if they're certified, a thirty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus. Um, I I last I heard, for instance, though, De Soto was providing a ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus. But again, we have made great strides. And so per officer, you see those figures and then you just double that by two for two positions. And once again, I do want to point out that the uh, grant-funded initiative initiative for the mental health response um, will likely be there in twenty-two. Um, and so when we look at these numbers, um, there's possibility we can get some funding reimbursed. It's a reimbursement grant on a quarterly basis, as I understand it. So that could play into um, these two positions. And right now, we're just trying to get uh, to a level that we can best respond to the citizens as as they call us and need us. Next slide. Any questions?
Chief, uh, thank you very much for that. And also want to recognize to make sure everybody understands that uh, Chief Mark Levigny is our interim police chief. And the uh, change in designation for Chief Robert Brown, who has gone to interim assistant city manager. Uh, so chief, it's all on your shoulders right now. Now, looking through the package, there's a great amount of verbiage that's attributed to this mental health uh, officer in terms of the 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 team that would be composed from, was it Lancaster, De Soto? And and Duncanville and Cedar Hill, is it all for us? Or is it?
Sir, I think I think everybody has an an interest and we're just, uh, nobody's made a commitment yet other than De Soto. Um, there'll be some interlocal agreements that have to take place as we move through this. But you know, I I I think it's something that we are looking to take part in very seriously because we do understand that there is a need. And I I do get that it is one officer. Um, but it is a regional response on a follow-up basis to try to reduce, um, you know, repeat calls from some of the known uh, folks that we get that unfortunately suffer from uh, mental health issues.
So in terms of participation on the team, if if there's not a a mental health crisis or call for that person, can they still be on patrol or or is that going to be one hundred percent of their job?
Well, it's it it's likely, the way it's being thought of at this point is it's going to be a follow-up and 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 a tracking process for each officer in each individual individual city. Um, so it's likely not going to be, now, understand this too, though. We, a a lot of these calls that we go on, you know, I mean, how do you define a mental health issue or a crisis? If we can start to reduce those numbers and and, you know, with such a program, then maybe we reduce the call load on patrol. Because we're not getting, maybe we're not having to do as many emergency detentions uh, because they're in that need. But we're also reducing calls for other things and and other resources that may become available to folks and they're they're calling us less. So the hope is, is that we get to a point where this team would have such an impact uh, that that we would see a reduction in calls to some degree.
Okay, so um, thinking about the the this particular officer, uh, in going back to something, I think I had a discussion, it was a public discussion with you and and Chief Brown at the time during when we were having some unrest in our nation that our police department was going to take on uh, the responsibility of more mental health training for the entire police force.
Yes, sir.
And if you could address that, because it is, as your package has mentioned, you know, the mental health crises, who, how do we define that? But there are many, many calls that y'all go to where it's defined as there, we've got an individual here who's having a a mental problem for whatever reason. So could you talk to us about what additional training the entire police force has received uh, in in terms of being able to identify a a mental crisis when they go out on a call?
Well, so in in, let me first say that a a one officer is not going to necessarily replace our patrol officers. Our patrol officers are trained to respond to uh, mental health, uh, people in mental health uh, crisis and those types of calls. Uh, this is just trying to figure out a way we might be able to do better. So they get that type of training in the basic police academy. We also have follow-up in-service training throughout the year. Um, and and a good number of our uh, police officers have received very specific uh, training. Uh, more training with regards to mental health response. And there are actually mental health officers, they have uh, designations for that. So we already have that in place with our staff. We're just trying to look at at ways we can better respond.
Okay, in the documentation you've seen so far on this response team, um, is is any mental health professional actually delineated what the criteria would be for calling this team into action versus that, let's say, we we put one person on this team, but they're doing other duties and all of a sudden the call comes in, okay, you're on the team, we have a crisis. Are there are there some identified criteria for actually saying uh, the call is now out for this person? For the team to respond?
So the way it's being thought up is in in um, imagined is we will still as patrol officers in all all the cities that are uh, part of this, respond as patrol officers. But the mental health team will act more as a follow-up. You know, you you kind of have detectives that follow up to criminal issues currently. It's, you know, each police department does. But this is being imagined as follow-up for mental health, for folks that are in mental health crises or episodes and that or or that need resources otherwise, um, that could possibly lead to a mental health issue. And it's more of a follow-up to try to get them the help before we get there or to address the current issue that they have.
Okay, uh, answers, my comments, concerns, any other uh, it, any other inputs from council? Yeah, Mr. Cooks, I see your hand up. You're muted. Unmute, Mr. Cooks.
I think Mr. Harvey was first, I was going to go after him.
Okay, Mr. Hart, no.
Okay. Okay, so chief, what I looked at here, also, when you talked about uh, the mental health, I think that's very important. We know across the nations, we've seen where that could have saved several lives and having a loss. So I appreciate you looking at or presenting to us about the grant opportunity for that first year. Uh, when I initially thought about this uh, as bringing back the two officers that years ago that we decreased staff with, uh, it was really more so to put us back at back at capacity. Oh, that what I'm hearing from constituents and also observing myself is patrolling of our streets and patrolling of things that's happening on our streets. And from speeding to running lights that put all of us in danger. I'm really concerned with that. And I think having additional officers on the street uh, as well as taking the mental capacity you talked about. But I'm more concerned with the taking, not more concerned, I'm not really concerned with the officers on patrolling on the street. As I looked at your uh, your information about our crime statistics, uh, I see breaking cars, I just hear a whole lot. And I know it really increased uh, even based upon twenty and COVID time where we didn't stop people. But uh, any part of our major street, we're just seeing a major, major uh, increase in traffic violations. And in some cases, still the the other crimes that we're having in our neighborhood. So that, can you really talk about how that, how those two officers can help in that area?
Yeah, so first, let me say also, and I failed to mention it earlier, but we did have during that time period, I showed on the slides uh, a vacancy in one of our traffic positions. Uh, we have been able to fill that vacancy and we we have our uh, current alignment of two traffic officers for the way we're set up. And they certainly concentrate on those areas. So we should see more active as we've kind of come out of COVID and and we already have started to come out of that. Uh, patrol officers certainly can address those needs as well. And they've been working very hard of late. I know we can't be everywhere at every intersection. And I know the citizens know that as well, but they have been trying very uh, hard to address those needs and will continue to do so.
Well, I'll I'll say this, and I know we're running short on time, but I will tell you that even a a street that I was concerned with, that thank you and Chief Brown for looking at it. Uh, first of all, you put up the speed uh, uh, response for to see how fast the traffic was going. And I think the next week or two, you still found cars that was going in a forty mile speed zone, sixty and seventy miles an hour on our street here in Duncanville, that is not safe for anyone. Uh, and then you reported back to me that there was one day you actually actually had twenty-three citation in just one day and and it caught the car that was going eighty miles an hour on a forty mile speed zone. And so that's sort of the reason that I'm asking uh, Boris to look back to say, put some more patrols in our street as well as the invasion of of properties in our neighborhood that we're going through. So that's, I know it's not a comment to you, not a question, but I just want to make sure everyone knew that's why I wanted, I was asking for this to be put back on the agenda to consider adding those officers back to our patrols, patrolling the street. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. Harvey?
Um, thank you, Mayor. When I I did some research um, looking at the budget and the staffing levels, uh, I noticed in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, uh, the staffing level was forty-five patrol, two special services, two school resource, I'm sorry, five school resource officers and ten criminal investigations. And that's a total of sixty. And in twenty twenty revised budget, uh, there was forty-five patrol, two special services, thirteen criminal investigation detectives, and that's a total of sixty. So sixty then and sixty now. Uh, the things that I have heard about uh, the police department that the that the public uh, appears to like, one is traffic. Uh, because I also get concerns uh, expressed to me about the level of speeding uh, and the bad driving that goes on, uh, particularly uh, sometimes around the charter school. Uh, and uh, also, uh, a very uh, popular feature of the police department is the park officer. Uh, that seems to be very well received throughout the community. Uh, the concern that the community expressed to me was a lack of police presence, a lack of patrols. And so I understand that the police can't be everywhere uh, at the same place. And at the same time, I can appreciate that. Uh, but perhaps some way, somehow, we can have relationships uh, with people in various neighborhoods throughout our community so that as we do patrols, quote unquote, uh, maybe we can stop by that person's house and say, hey, how you doing? Just checking up on you. And then just continue to do our patrol. So that way, there is a person, uh, hopefully an influential person in the neighborhood that can say, oh, yeah, yeah, the police stopped by my house such and such a time. And so uh, that would help with the perception that the police are not patrolling the streets enough and 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 also too, um, citizens on patrol. Uh, I I would like to maybe have a briefing on that or presentation as to how they have been faring over the years. Do they have more? Do they have less? Do they have more cars? Do they have less? What kind of interactions do they have in the neighborhood? Uh, I I think it would be helpful if people saw someone, either police officer, citizens on patrol, so that they can say, oh, yes, I see them. So uh, if we're going to add to police officers, I agree. Uh, the focus should be on patrol and presence, especially presence that people can see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Uh, yeah, next is uh, Ms. Jameson and then Mr. McNabb. Ms. Jameson?
Um, I agree with that also. Uh, what I hear is uh, lack of police presence and patrol. And uh, while, you know, uh, getting a um, new officer for a regional team, we need police officers in our town. We need the presidents, we need the patrol. Um, and I hear the funding Dallas County, but it wouldn't start till April of twenty twenty-two. May or no, they didn't say April, they said spring of twenty twenty-two sometime. And if this is about hiring two new police officers, detective, patrol, whatever, I'm for that um, for our city. Because that's what I hear too. And people are concerned about uh, crimes on their cars. Um, the shooting of guns. Um, you know, stuff that just goes on in the city. And I realize that uh, there's some mental illness that are involved with people who commit crimes. But uh, we probably need them in our own city, we don't need them in the region. Uh, I think that, and I think that that's what we hear from citizens. They want, they want you to stay here, they want you to be here. They want to see you, they they want to feel like you're there. And so that's the way I feel about it. That the other sounds, you know, like sort of high in the sky because we basically need you in our city. People want you, they want you, they want to see you. People want you. They want, they want to see you. They want to feel you. And I think we're gonna really have a lot more traffic, uh, situations with the, uh, eighteen-wheelers coming down Duncanville Road and Main Street from the businesses that are moving in there that have to do with shipping and those eighteen-wheelers. And we got to get something straight because they come barreling down those streets. And I'm sure that, uh, probably you can train them not to do that after a while, writing a few tickets. So, uh, that's the way I feel about it too, is exactly what I, I think some of the others you've heard is that to stay here. We want you for here and to see you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jameson, Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Lavigny as well. I, I always appreciate your service to the community as well. Uh, I had some general questions, but uh, like, you know, I was looking, when looking at the charts, the, the number of calls is definitely increased. I- is, is there something that's, i- is there more reason behind that? Or, or what, what's the cause of, of more calls?
You know, I guess to truly answer that question, uh, Mr. McNabb, I would, it would take a deeper dive, um, than, than what I've done right now. Uh, I, I think we just have more people, we have, you know, a call for service can be anything from somebody calling on a telephone to a traffic stop to an extra patrol. Um, and I, I know our extra patrols, even though you guys, um, I, I've heard some of those comments too, um, here recently about not having citizens not, um, feeling like we're out there. But a call for service i- is anything that we do. So, um, it, it seems like the more people we have out there and the more activity we have, that's just a natural progression.
Okay, thank you. And, and also, uh, w- with the addition of two officers, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll waste, we'll waste more, uh, what, I guess what results will we, we see or expect from adding two officers?
Well, I guess, and, and that largely depends on, um, once we get those officers uh, trained up to where they're effectively helping us and how we distribute them throughout the department. And so, um, you know, obviously, we're not even fully staffed and patrol. I know I'm hearing a lot of you guys, uh, saying right now that, uh, we need more patrol. Well, we're not even fully staffed there, so at this point. But when we do, we expect to see, um, a better impact in some of the issues that you're raising. I've got some ideas about getting more into the community that, um, especially with the, the weather getting better, that, that we can start to get back to and, and making those personal relationships. Ultimately, right. Uh, people do want to be safe, but maybe as importantly, they want to feel safe. And I, I think a couple of y'all touched on that already, and I think there's a way we can do that. So, and maybe we can have an impact if we can get another detective position to, to, um, get those crime, um, clearances, those crime clearance rates up and to be more responsive to folks who need follow-up, uh, investigation.
Uh, the, the other thing, Mr. Harvey touched on this as well, and I, and I, and I was wondering too, uh, with CLPS, uh, uh, citizens on patrol, i- is, how are we doing with that? And, and also can they further help with the engagement a- a- as, as well? I mean, it's, what, what I like is Chief Lavigny, I like hearing that people are calling because that's, uh, you know, they're becoming eyes as well. Uh, the, the citizens on patrol are eyes as well. The, the other thing that I, I noted too was we are getting cameras in our parks. Uh, and it's not quite fully done, but, but we're, we are doing that as well. And, and I think that's another valuable tool that, that we have, that, that can, can help with the, some of this stuff as well. Uh, uh, I, I, I know our police department does a, a, a fine job, and I know they really try to be the best that they can be. And, um, I want to know how we can best support them as well. The, the other question or comment I was gonna make to you, Chief Lavigny, uh, you know, I've seen the details of our reports and there's other cities as well. But it seems like that we do better reporting than what our sister cities or other neighboring cities do as well. Would you agree with that statement?
I think what I would, I, I hope we do. What I would, I think what I'd be confident in addressing is that when we've had people leave in the past, um, and, and several years ago, I mean, it's been a good, good number of years. We had a pretty good mass exodus to a, a larger, uh, city in the metroplex area. And our folks that went over there, they, uh, began to get in other specialized divisions and began to promote very quickly. And what I, what I think I could say pretty confidently is that because we require more of our police officers, we require them not to be so specialized to where they just take a report and they pass it on to somebody else to do the warrant and affidavit. They know how to do a lot of those things that in other agencies, um, those folks aren't asked to do. So we, we wear a lot of hats because we do, we're, we're trying to be as efficient as we can be. Uh, so as far as the, you know, the better reports, I would hope they are, but I think they're better rounded officers that we have here.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cooks, I saw your hand up, and then I'd like to, uh, close it with my comments. Go ahead, Mr. Cooks.
Thank you. Let's comment. And, you know, as you talk about the, uh, when I think about the red light camera, uh, back in the day, we had red light camera. If I recall, about eighty percent of, of our red light citations was people who did not live in Duncanville. And so I'm gonna probably say, if, if that's the same thing with what we're seeing in our streets and speeding, and I don't know if I can use that same percentage, but I will tell you a large percent of them, the people just not living in Duncanville. And so I just think we just strengthen that back up even more so with the patrol officers. Uh, I totally respect the, uh, the citizens on patrol. I actually attended one of the, I was actually a graduate of the fifty-second class. However, even with the citizens on patrol, what they're able to do is pick up the, the radio and dial in and say, here's what's happening. But we still got to get the patrol officer there to catch it and see for themselves, know to get a citation. So I think it's a combination of both, but more so if we can stop it, we'll, we'll have a safer city, which is one of our, our milestones. So thank you, Chief, for all you do. Thank you, Mayor. Stop my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Uh, okay, Chief, I'm gonna try and sum up what we've heard because your package, the last line on your package says discussion and direction of funding. So you need something from us as a council. I think what, and I, I concur with the comments that have been made already in terms of more officers on patrol in our community. And to, to put that into perspective in terms of the request for that individual to be, we don't even sure of the amount of dedicated hours that person would have to this regional mental health team. I believe what we're hearing from the entire city council is that we would rather withhold our opinion on that at this point in time because we feel it's more important to have more officers on patrol on our streets, engaging with our citizens. And the fact that all of our officers are, and I will say, highly trained and highly qualified to deal with mental situations when they go out on a call. And that's the confidence that we feel in all of our police force, that, that we have officers that have gone through the training. They know how to handle a mental crisis when they're facing it in engagement with a call. So in that respect, I believe what we're hearing, what, what we've all expressed is that we concur with the funding. We'd like to see that actually put into, you know, a little more granularity in terms of a funding request because fully loaded, we're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand some odd dollars, uh, for those two individuals, fully loaded. Uh, but withholding, and if you need to communicate to the sister cities in terms of who's putting together this regional mental health team, to tell them the council has met tonight and based on our discussions, uh, we are withholding our, our judgment call on that one at this point in time. So, uh, what we're looking for then is coming back to council with a, with a formal recommendation for the addition of these individuals with, uh, with a full explanation of how it fits into the budget.
And Mayor, if I could just real quick, um, j- just please understand with the regional aspect, a couple of things. Number one, um, although there may be some regional response to other sister cities, primarily, and this was emphasized, our officer would follow up on our, uh, issues and our folks that are suffering from those. And then maybe more importantly to what you just stated is we have not yet made a commitment. And even if we made a commitment to that, we would not have somebody over there until sometime, you know, at least into the spring of next year, uh, if at, at all. So, um, I just thought I'd let you know that, just so, uh, we were at a good understanding of, of what that meant and what, what we're looking at down the road potentially.
Okay, good. I appreciate that, Chief. So, uh, I guess we're all clear on, on your, on your movement forward. Is that right? Is that an affirmative, Chief, for we're clear on?
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. You, you want to see how it fits in the budget and we'll, y'all will consider it at that point.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just as a sidebar, everybody remembers, we're still on our briefing and working session, and it's, uh, the time is seven forty, but this is important stuff. This is important stuff that we're talking about. We're having good, uh, clear discussion on stuff, so it's, it's good. And we're giving direction to staff on how we want the city to be governed as well. All right, moving on to item two D, discussion on city council rules and procedures regarding rule D, agenda rules, friendly amendments and motions, item requested by at-large council member Harvey. Mr. Harvey, you're muted. If you, did you want to speak? There you go. You're open.
Uh, yes, I actually is, uh, based on the experience of last meeting, so I just wanted to get an explanation of the rule and, uh, a comparison of how my, uh, expression buried from the rule, uh, so that in the future, I can be better positioned, uh, to do a friendly amendment, is the attorney here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hager is here? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
I'm all ears.
Okay, uh, l- let's go back to, uh, our, our rules and how we generally have conducted our business over time. And, and I don't know if the council has, uh, a copy of the rules procedure. Generally, uh, when you have an agenda item that requires a motion, uh, for you to pass an, uh, agenda item, there is either a resolution or an ordinance that's asked, that you're asked to consider. And, uh, generally, one of the council members at the invitation of the mayor, when it's appropriate, asks for a motion to be made. That motion generally is to approve or deny a, uh, pending, uh, agenda item. Uh, so your motion, uh, by virtue of the Texas Open Meetings Act requires that that motion approve a posted agenda item. Uh, during the course of those agenda items, it comes, uh, as a result of discussion, you may want to amend the motion or to amend the resolution or amend the ordinance. At that time, uh, a motion to amend the motion that's on the table is, uh, fielded by the mayor. Um, that requires under Roberts rules, which are advisory under your rules procedure for you to make the amending, uh, motion. Uh, it receive a second and then it go to a vote. Uh, if the vote is approved and it's within the parameters of the agenda item, then, uh, if that item passes, then there is an amended motion for you to amend that ordinance. Any motion to amend must be within the parameters of the resolution or the agenda item, or it violates the Texas Open Meetings Act, which, uh, generally is never an issue. So for example, if you were talking about, uh, passing the speed limit, for example, and we were to amend the motion to go from thirty miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour, that's within the agenda item to set the speed limit for that portion of the road. It wouldn't allow you to make a motion to amend that ordinance to include another street. So, and that's because of the Texas Open Meetings Act, not because of your rule of procedure or parliamentary procedure. So, uh, now occasionally, and I'm talking about this in broad general terms, and we'll get the specific issue, uh, at hand from last week. Under Roberts rules, there is no such thing as a friendly amendment. The friendly amendment is a contrivance that we use in order to have to take two votes on the same agenda item. So how the friendly amendment generally works is the, the movement is asked by one of your colleagues to say, would you accept a friendly amendment to, in my example, to change the speed limit from thirty miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour? And if it's consented to by the movement, and second, then the amended motion is then restated by the movement to include, quote, the friendly amendment. So that would, and, and that's a contrivance that we use in order to speed up the meeting. Um, and I'll kind of read to you and, uh, what it says in Roberts rules and the commentaries about friendly amendments. The term friendly amendment is often used to describe an amendment offered by someone who is in sympathy with the purposes of the main motion and the belief that the amendment will either improve the statement or the effect of the main motion, presumably to satisfy, to the satisfaction of the maker or will increase the chances of the main motion's adoption. Regardless of whether or not the maker of the motion accepts the amendment, it must be open to debate and then, quote, formally voted on by, um, by unanimous consent. We've done, generally handled that by the chair. So, uh, unless someone has an objection, the friendly amendment is then restated in the main motion and you vote. So that's generally how we've conducted business. At our last meeting, we were undertaking to consider, um, amending the code of ordinances to include a homestead exemption. And in, uh, the main motion was made by, I believe, council member Jameson and was seconded, I can't recall who seconded it. But Mr. Harvey then offered a friendly amendment on how it was to be funded. How the funding issues are budgetary items. We had nothing on the agenda to include a budgetary item to, quote, pay for the, um, uh, how we were gonna pay if we ex, uh, approved the homestead exemption. Since we didn't have anything on the agenda about a budget, I felt that we were then considering an item that was not on a posted agenda and then by virtue of that violated the Open Meetings Act. I certainly did not mean that your plan or your attempt to justify your vote uh, was not legitimate, but it was inappropriate based on the posted agenda item. So the friendly amendment, in other words, you can have made a friendly amendment to reduce the amount of the, um, homestead exemption. That's within the parameters of adopting the homestead. What I felt might have been outside was the fact that the justification in the budgetary considerations that would have to be approved, which could not be part of the main motion, and we could not conditionally pass the ordinance based on, uh, your plan of financing to, to support the homestead. Because that was not within the parameters of the agenda item, and we can't conditionally pass an ordinance based on some act in the future. So that's why. So that's why it was difficult for us to undertake an amendment offered by Mr. Harvey. Not that it didn't have merit, it was just procedural issue that needed to have proper agenda item posted to discuss that. So the friendly amendment has to be within the parameters of the motion, and it has to be within the parameters of the posted agenda item because the Texas Open Meetings Act applies to our agenda and to any motions for any ordinance or resolution or agenda item which we pass. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hager. And one of the comments that you stated that I just wanted to elaborate on is that Roberts Rules of Orders is advisory only. It is not stated in our rules or procedures that we abide by Roberts Rules of Orders specifically, categorically, and or definitively, and it's the it's it is that way intentionally. So what we are getting schooling on from Mr. Hager is the procedures advised through Roberts Rules of Orders by which this council operates and probably every council in in the state does. But I have read other city charters and other cities' rules or procedures, and I have not yet found one that actually says that they abide by Roberts Rules of Orders. And in questioning some other attorneys at other organizations, you know, why is that? It's a very clear, in fact, I went to even to the Attorney General of the state of Texas to ask the question when it came to the Open Meetings Act and so forth. And I got a pretty clear answer is is that the Roberts Rules of Orders, as Mr. Hager said, are advisory. And we attempt at all times to to operate that with that. Because we, as a council, none of us are certified parliamentarians. However, we do rely on our city attorney to have that education and information for instruction and guidance as we operate. The difficulty comes in that these things are like on a it's 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 an instantaneous required intervention on the part of the city attorney to give us that guidance and education when a situation occurs, which is what happened during our last city council meeting. So, Mr. Hager, I appreciate your explanation of why the council was not able to entertain what Mr. Harvey was attempting to do. You know, in essence, there were there were two motions. One was to delay, and that was not approved, and one was to approve the exemption, and that was not approved either. So that's where it stands. And so I know that another written explanation of rules or procedures were also provided to us by Mr. Hager in quite a amount of detail. Now, I do have one question for you, Mr. Hager.
Yes, sir.
Is it positively advised or ill-advised if we were to augment our rules of procedure to actually put in 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 writing how those things operate?
You have the ability, under your home rule charter, it says that you will establish the rules of procedure. You're just like any other legislative body mayor. As you well know, legislatures, when they are seated or Congress, when they are seated, spend a great deal of time adopting rules of procedure for the bringing forth of business before the the body. And so you, like any other legislative body, have the ability to write the rules any way you see appropriate, subject to the Open Meetings Act. So I have no problem if the council wants to entertain that discussion at a future date to amend their rules and to adopt the rules of which they desire to govern their proceedings on the night they meet as council. You have the ability to do so.
Okay.
And I have no problem to directly answer your question. Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking for a direct. Yeah, I'm looking for a direct answer there.
Yeah. It's better advised instead of Roberts rules are not written necessarily in a democratic fashion. If you read the entire volume, the chair can pretty much govern the meeting any way the chair sees fit. There, you know, obviously you, from time to time, have asserted a point of order and the person states their position and the chair overrules it. And if no one contests that, then the chair's ruling stands. So I would prefer that you write your own rules than rely on Roberts rules.
Okay, all right. I think probably got enough information on that. So I'll go back to Mr. Harvey. Have you received an adequate explanation to your to your question?
I'm I'm still mulling it over. I saw Councilmember James wave a hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Okay, I didn't see that. Yes.
I put it out before Councilmember Harvey was even through speaking, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Well, a couple of things. You were saying that on your example on the speed limit, that if the friendly amendment was asking for a higher speed limit or lower speed limit, that that would be okay? Or that would not be okay?
I was using it just as an illustrative example.
I got it.
Didn't mean to infer that it would be or wouldn't be, but but generally, if you were going to change that the point being, you could change the ordinance to meet or amend the ordinance within the bounds of what the ordinance as posted on on an agenda item. And the fact that, like, you could change the dollar amount if staff was asking for the approval of a resolution to fund two police officers, and you said, no, we want to fund one police officer, the friendly amendment would be to fund only one position, not two positions. So I was trying to illustrate that the amendment or the friendly amendment has to be within the parameters of the agenda item as posted.
Okay, this is the part that I would take issue on. And obviously, taking a definition of friendly amendment from Robert Schur's border when they don't recognize it is kind of odd. You know, if they don't recognize it, how are they giving us a definition of it? But the parameters.
You'll have to, you'll have to ask them, because I just read from.
Well, I understand, but I why would we want to take their definition if they don't even recognize it?
That's why you need to write your own definition.
Okay, and the parameters of the motion and the parameters of open meetings. If it's stated in the, like, when he Okay, so he goes to the next meeting and he puts his item on the agenda, then he is stating what his intent is, and that's a totally different agenda item. It's not like the first one.
I understood.
So the the rules, and one thing I want to clarify, the rules of procedure, for those of you council members that have not been on the council a long time, the council has always made up for themselves. We make them up. It's not in the charter. Citizens don't vote on them. It's what we make up for ourselves to govern ourselves.
I understood. The charter provides and states that establish the rules of procedure to govern their proceedings.
Ourselves.
Yes.
So so you have to forgive me. I think it's a little odd also to ask the city attorney to tell us what we meant by our own rules, but the I think that when when the council member puts it on the agenda as a new item, it's a new item, and it doesn't fall under the rules that we had about not bringing back this in in so many days.
Well, if if the the request was to put a budget item on the next agenda, that wasn't considered. That would be correct. That would be a different item, not a reconsideration.
What it was. We didn't define whether it was a budget item or or not. I didn't define if it was a budget item. When you put an agenda item on there, you don't have to give a definition of what it is.
I understand.
Okay, so if he put it on there and it had new parameters, it is a new item. And then if using your examples, if he if we as a council wanted to redefine or change some of the parameters of what he had suggested, we ought to be able to amend it, a friendly amendment that way. It can't be both ways.
No, you can't, because it's not on the agenda.
I understand. It should have been on the agenda, not on the briefing.
I I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm saying if he put, if he brought back, I don't know if he was told he couldn't bring it back or not, but if he brought it back on the meeting as an agenda item, he had changed the parameters of my agenda item, so it was a new item. And I think it was brought up at the last meeting that he didn't vote with the prevailing side.
If he changed what he couldn't do at the meeting is ask for a friendly amendment to something that was outside the parameters of the posted agenda. It's not even a three-year-old problem. It's an open meetings problem.
Okay, so so we accept that. We accept that.
Well, I I accept the fact that he was discussing how he wanted to, quote, if he made it as a motion. If he wanted to just talk about how I think we can afford the homestead exemption, and it's based on these eight things, he's just arguing why he wants the homestead exemption passed. It's not an amendment. It's just a justification to vote for the homestead exemption.
You should have just approved it and then said how to fund it. Should have voted to approve it.
The advocate, you're the advocates. I'm just there to answer the procedural questions. He made a motion. I can only respond to the motion he made. I am not an advocate for or against the homestead or for or against Mr. Harvey's position with regard to how he wants.
Understand that, but perhaps next time, city man, city attorney, perhaps next time, you should explain to him that you can you can make a motion to vote on this item and then later discuss the funding instead of tying it together. Because that was my point. And then on the next meeting, if he brought it back, then you're saying that he can't tie the way to pay for it to the agenda item again.
I understand what you're saying, but I I don't run the meeting. I can only respond. If someone would have said, here's what I want to do, Mr. Hager, how do I do that? Then I could do that. I don't know that it's the mayor or one of you to say, wait a minute. Tell us how we can do something instead of just saying how I can't do something.
Oh, Bob, Bob, no, you've told us before how to handle things.
I know, and it's only because I've been invited by the person that's making the motion or holding the discussion and saying, how do we do this, Mr. Hager?
Oh, 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 oh. So if so if someone's struggling, you don't think you should come to their rescue and say, look, if this is what you want to do, this is how you get there? This is how you get to that?
And then I would be accused of butting in and doing your business instead of.
You do.
And it's true, and so.
You do. You do do it.
Okay, Ms. Jameson, we're you're, you know, this is getting into banter between you and the city attorney and I need.
No, it's not. It's clarification, Mayor Gordon, and I'm trying to clarify with him on that next time, if a council person is struggling with getting their motion, that you, I mean, that's part of your job because you work for the council.
I understand. If the council member said, wait a minute, Mr. Hager, I need help. Here's what I want to do. And if the mayor says, Ms. Hager, go ahead, then I will, and I have.
No, 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 no. You don't ask permission from the mayor to help a council person. We are equals. We are peers. You don't ask permission from the mayor to help a council member make a motion. If he if someone wants to make a motion and they can't get it done, then I guess what we're saying is for our council members that you have to ask him for help. You know, and he's not going to help you unless you say, please help me.
Without, I don't want to argue with you. However, I will say this, that when there's an an item that was as thoroughly and vociferously and passionately debated as that one, if I interject myself into the middle of that, then I'll be accused of either supporting or opposing, and that's not my job. If if y'all need help, then address the to the manager or ask me, and I will help you, but I'm not going to get involved in making a a policy decision for you. That's not my job. And if if I was lacking last Tuesday, I apologize.
Yeah, I I didn't ask.
Mr. Hager. And he's not looking at that, Ms. Jameson.
I just wanted clarification on what was.
Mr. Hager is is trying to respond to you in a generic fashion rather than a specific fashion. And I understand, and I have I have personally looked to Mr. Hager when there's a situation. I said, the city attorney, please give me advice or give us instruction on that. And any city council member can do that, is what he's saying. It doesn't have to come to me, or you can come to the chair and say, Mr. Mayor, is is it acceptable if I ask the city attorney a question? I'm going to say cer- certainly. And that's how we can proceed. So I saw, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey, you had your hand up.
So so what I would like to do is to bring back to the next meeting as a budget item, how to pay for a homestead exemption and a vote up or down based on what I outlay, whether or not we do a homestead exemption. How's that at the next meeting?
But the homestead exemption has been disapproved.
No, he said that if I were to come back and ask for a budget amendment, then I could bring it back.
On the homestead exemption, then it would come under the sixty-day rule.
He could.
Hey, then we need to have a meeting and get our and change some of our home rules. Because this is, I feel like that was, the whole thing was a setup and a stumble. We need to come back and check. We need to have a meeting to change our home rules of procedure.
Well, acknowledged. And that's why I asked Mr. Hager moments ago. I said, do we need to actually codify how we want to want to operate this in this? And the answer is, I think we have to.
It's not codify. It's that we want some changes.
I mean, codified means putting in your writing into our rules of procedure. That's.
But we need to change them.
Well, that's what I just said. If we need to actually put it in writing in black and white, so everybody understands how we operate, then we ought to go ahead and do it. And I'm using the word codify, whether you like it or not. That's what we'd be doing. We would actually be putting in black and white into our rules of procedure, how we would approach amendments, how we would approach friendly amendments that really don't even exist, and how we would operate in discussions on motions. So if that's what we need to do.
Amendments do exist for us. We do make friendly amendments.
Yeah, and but there is no such thing as a friendly amendment.
And which we do not go by.
If we want, if we want to write our own rules of procedure and create a friendly amendment, then we may do so. We may actually create a rule, a friendly amendment, even though one does not exist, if that's what we want to do.
Mayor, how do we bring this this discussion to a close?
That we've been using for years.
I think we've been given enough conversation and need to move forward.
But understand that the homestead exemption has been disapproved by city council, Mr. Harvey. Okay. Moving on to item number E, and this is discussion on continue to have our city council meetings in person or I'm sorry, whether we continue to have our city council meetings virtually or in person. And I brought this up as a on the calendar at the last city council meeting, and we're advised that it's probably off topic, so we need to have a discussion of a separate agenda item, which we're doing tonight. So I will reiterate what I said last time, that there are bills operating through the Texas eighty-seventh legislature to make virtual meetings permanent, if a city so desires to do so. It is no longer going to have to come under a emergency declaration from the governor. It's it's a matter of somebody in state legislature, these the sponsors of these. It's, it's a matter of somebody in state legislature, these, the sponsors of these bills in both the senate and the house, recognizing that we as cities and, and businesses have learned how to operate virtually. And we have. I commend all of this council and the entire staff, we have learned how to conduct a virtual meeting well. And I, all of you probably attend virtual meetings and, and other venues and other specific responsibilities, whatever those are. The, 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 the nation business has evolved into how do we use virtual meeting. So the question is that while we have the current authority to operate in virtual meetings, some cities that I'm aware of have gone to meeting in person. And all I wanted to do was find out from y'all is, do you want to continue to meet virtually? Or would you prefer to go in person? We have the ability to do either one, both legally and operationally. The city council chambers have been set up. If you haven't visited them, well, and you know, it's been quite a while, if you haven't visited city council chambers, uh, it is set up, the dais is set up for social distancing and their partitions are in place, operate under CDC guidelines to have city council meetings in person. We can continue to do virtual meetings as we're doing tonight, if we so desire. That's all I wanted to ask. Y'all want to continue doing virtual? Or do you want to go back to, to doing in person? Understanding going back to in person, you know, that means we'll still have to do social distancing, we're going to have to cordon off some of the rows within the city council chambers and, and mark the chairs, you can sit here, you can't sit here, and so forth, so on. So I just wanted to do, just put this on the table, find out, keep going as we're doing, or do you want to go back to doing in person? So what I'm going to do is I've done in the past, is go around the table numerically by district and just kind of see how you feel. So, Mr. Vera Cruz.
Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I think that, um, depending on what's on the agenda, some things have priority or way more than others. I think if it's on a light agenda, we could stay virtual, if it's something that really needs discussion, uh, I think we ought to meet in person.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mac Burnett.
I'm going to make it simple, in person.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Anderson.
It doesn't matter to me, I can go either way.
Okay, Mr. Cooks.
In person.
Virtually.
I'm sorry, say again.
She said virtually.
Okay, it broke up on my end, you said virtually. Yeah, I hear you now.
Yeah.
Virtually, okay, Mr. Harvey.
In person.
In person. I can go either way, uh, so it sounds like there is a preference for, for meeting in person. So, uh, I'm just gonna, you know, unless there's some strong objection, um, we will, at our next city council meeting, we will go back to meeting in person. Yeah, Mr. Cooks.
Oh, no, okay, I was going to say a timeline, we really could, just start it for the month of June, uh, give us the month of June to start in person.
Okay. I'm good with that, too, give staff time to get ready to set up.
Yes.
Okay. So first city council meeting in June, we go back in person. Okay, one thing I would like to add to this is that with all of the virtual meetings that we as a city council have conducted, I want to commend you council members for participate, and how you participate in a virtual meeting, because you've done it professionally. And what I mean by that is I have attended so many virtual meetings where the individuals, I mean, some of them, they've been driving in their cars, they've been talking to their sister or their brother or their kid in the backseat. There's been some meetings that I've gone to virtually where the individual is sitting in their kitchen and the kids are, are sitting there doing their homework. There's dogs barking, there's cats meowing, and there's stuff going on. And it is totally unprofessional. And I'm not going to throw any particular meeting that I've been to under the bus because it's just not good to do that. But I want to thank you city council members, that our city council meetings virtually have been professional. And I commend you and I thank you for that. Yeah, Mr. Cooks, I saw your hand up.
That's only because I don't have a dog or a cat, as soon as I get one, uh, you'll hear my dog and cat barking in the back, in the background, no.
You better muzzle it then.
No, but for, for our citizens, uh, though we are meeting face to face, correct me if I'm wrong, we will still be live on Facebook and for those that want to join and listen in on the council meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, we will still continue to, but to publish electronically, I guess would be the word, on social media, yeah.
Very good, thanks.
Okay. Okay, um, and one other, yeah, Mr. Mac Burnett, I see your hand up.
Uh, uh, I wanted to, uh, just, not on this particular topic, Mayor, but I was gonna make the recommendation or suggestion since we did this on the, at the, we had a session last council meeting, I would like to move item five A to the consent agenda.
Item five A is considering ordinance amendment section nineteen dash one sixty-three of the city ordinance, add Frank Keister Boulevard to the list of no, no through truck zones. That would be acceptable, does anybody have any objection to moving item five A to the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, item five A is now moved to the consent agenda, city secretary, please make a note of that. Okay. Uh, one other aspect of meeting back in person I would want to put on the table is that the, uh, we have become, what shall I say, very comfortable meeting virtually. And in that comfort factor, our appearance or dress has become very comfortable as well. When we go back to meeting in person, I would greatly appreciate it if council members would respect the, uh, the dress and the appearance of a professional city council member when we go back in person. Enough said. Okay, uh, that will close our briefing session, the timestamp on that is eight seventeen. The time is eight eighteen, I'm calling to order the city council meeting for the city of Duncanville on April the twentieth of twenty twenty-one at eight eighteen. And going to that, we will now have the invocation, and Mr. Cooks, Mayor Pro Tem Cooks, if you would give the invocation, please.
Sure, let us pray, oh Lord, Father, how we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Now, Lord, we ask for your guidance for our meeting, we ask of your blessing, that is our city, and most of our law, we. Thank you for keeping our citizens, thank you for keeping each council member. We love you and we really adore all the things you do for us. Thank you, Father, for your wisdom and your understanding and your grace and your mercy. It's in the name of Jesus we pray, amen and amen.
Amen. If you would all individually rise and give pledges to the flags of the United States and pledges to the flags of the state of Texas. Thank you very much. Moving on to item one, uh, reports. Uh, first one is the mayor's report, I have just a couple of quick items for y'all. Uh, information purposes, on April seventh, I attended the second transportation and infrastructure roundtable with Congresswoman Beth Van Dyne of the twenty-fourth congressional district. It was a very interesting meeting and.
Mayor Gordon, can you hold real quick? We have to turn off our Facebook Live.
Oh, okay.
Is scheduled for April twenty-ninth, from seven PM to nine PM. Uh, National Memorial Police Memorial Day is on May fourteenth, from ten AM to eleven AM. And we'll also have our fire truck pull on May twenty-second. Uh, we, tomorrow, just as a heads up for everyone, is Administrative Professionals Day. So if you get a chance to thank those folks who helped to keep all of us in line and help us to make sure we're getting things moving forward. Finally, and certainly not least, I don't see him on here, but, uh, we are pleased to announce, uh, to the public and remind, to council, uh, we have a new economic development director, his name is Augustine Garcia, we call him Gus Garcia. And he has hit the role running, he started on last Thursday and has been actively engaged in coming up to speed with all, and you will hear more from him, uh, from a public standpoint, as well as from a council, just to better understand our demands and what's going on. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item two on our agenda, proclamations and presentations. Item two A, recognition of keep Duncanville beautiful, spring twenty twenty-one, curb appeal, residential properties, uh, Mr. Timothy Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, I'd, uh, like to, uh, draw your attention, attention to this curb appeal program that many of y'all are familiar with, that took a hiatus during, uh, much of COVID nineteen, and we are bringing it back as we open uh, things back up across the state.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Can you just pause real quick so we can get our Facebook Live up again?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. All right, sir, you can begin, thank you.
All righty. And IT, if you could, uh, provide the, uh, slide deck for this, thank you. Um, as I was saying, the, this, the curb appeal awards are back for spring of twenty twenty-one. And, uh, keep Duncanville beautiful is excited to, uh, reengage with the community on, uh, recognize these outstanding properties in Duncanville. Uh, I'd like to thank my board, uh, five of which who, uh, take each of the districts and, um, drive in the districts and try to find eligible, uh, properties. So if we could move to the next slide, please. Uh, for District One, we'd like to recognize Sue Leslie at ten fifty Doug Creek Road. Next slide, please. For District Two, winner is Paula Lee at two twenty-six Metal Arc Lane. Next slide, please. District Three winner is Jerry Burns at six twenty-two East Center Street. Next slide. Um, and then District Four, it went by really quickly, um, the owner requested anonymity and no public recognition. So, uh, we are honoring that and moving on to the next slide, please. Uh, District Five, Marcelino Junior and Dahlia Luna at twelve fourteen Odeon Lane. So those are our five winners, and we are very grateful to, uh, the city council for the support that, uh, you all give, keep Duncanville beautiful and the ability to go out there and, and highlight these properties. It's a, it's a joy for our board members and, uh, we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, we thank you for your participation and guidance with that group and for all the hard work you put in to identifying our neighbors and taking care of their properties, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item two B, introduce Duncanville High School Youth and Government Program Officers, this has been requested by Mayor Pro Tem Cooks, Mr. Cooks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce this group of students to you. But before I do, uh, would you indulge with me and to introduce yourself first uh, to them and your role on the council, and then we'll, I'll go ahead and introduce them from there, so, uh, Mayor, will you just kind of go around the room?
Well, I have noticed individuals on Zoom call with names I had, didn't recognize, and now I'm pretty well, know who they are. But, uh, folks, all those students that are here participating, I'm Barry Gordon and Mayor of the city of Duncanville, honored and proud to be able to serve you.
Yes, I'm, uh, Joe Vera Cruz, city council member, District Run One, and former school board trustee, welcome.
I'm Don Mac Burnett, District Two, Duncanville High School graduate.
Bonnie Anderson, District Three. For one more, now.
One more, of course, Mark Cooks, District Four, and that covers, well, okay, go ahead, Mark Cooks, District Four.
I'm Jonette Jamison, council member, District Five. My district is wisdom, no.
So the student.
Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey.
Sorry, my apology.
Patrick Carville, city council member at large, and I represent the entire city.
Great, thank you, I was going to tell you to tell them that, thank you. Well, I just want you to know, students, as I pretty introduced your, your, your teacher, is that Ms. Jamison is the longest-serving council member on, on this council. So I just wanted you to just know that, to this, to know that she's been around for a very, very long time. And let me not pass up our seat. So, Aretha?
Oh. Sorry, hi, Aretha Feroz Benavides, I am the city manager, I've been here since, uh, February twenty-second, but in local government for a very long time.
All right, well, thank you everybody for introducing themselves, and I just want you to know, when you, once, once you learn more about these students, I hope to bring back at a later time, or how us as a council can work along with these, perhaps thinking about, uh, a junior council at some point later on in our life, so I hope to bring that back later. But before I do, let me introduce Mr. Steve Kane, you've heard of Coach, uh, Kathy Self, you've heard of Coach, uh, well, football coach, uh, Samples, you've heard of Coach, what's the basketball coach's name, Don? You've heard, you've heard of all of our coaches, but who you have not heard about is the Mr. Steve Kane. Mr. Steve Kane is an award-winning teacher, he's eight years in the district, he teaches US history, a pathway to college. He's a, he's a youth of government instructor of this program. Uh, this is a YMCA national program that she, that's been in Texas for the last seventy-five years. Mayor and Council, let me introduce you to Mr. Stephen Kane, who will introduce students from here, Mr. Kane?
First of all, uh, Council, I definitely want to, to thank you for, uh, having us out. As I was telling, uh, Councilman Cooks, uh, we also use Robert Rules of Order, so it was very interesting to see you guys, you know, talk about how it's used and friendly amendments, because we have those same arguments, uh, when we use it, it, program. So it was kind of interesting, and the kids were like, wow, they use it too. So, uh, as Mr. Cooks said, you know, the program is seventy-five years, uh, uh, in Texas, uh, this is the eighth year we've had it here in Duncanville, uh, we've had a great team, uh, the last couple of years. Uh, one thing that's special about the group I have here, just like y'all, we have, uh, statewide elections, and we have, uh, ten people that are state, uh, officers. And Duncanville High School, I'm proud to say, took five out of, uh, ten of those positions. So we're representing well in the state of Texas, uh, I was telling, uh, Ms. Councilman Cooks that, you know, over fifteen hundred kids, uh, vote every year that are in the program for these kids. So, uh, exciting. So uh, exciting to have four state officer, uh, four state officers. And this year, we actually have the governor of Texas from Duncanville High School as well. So I'll start off with uh, John Robinson, uh, if you wanna uh, introduce yourself, uh, he is the youth governor of uh, the state of Texas. And the program that we do uh, through the YMCA.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jalen Robinson, I'm a junior at the high school. On my position of uh, in youth and government, like Mister Kane said, is the youth governor. And um, my future plan for us to do in social science at the University of uh, Chicago.
Alright, next up, Jamie Bowers.
Um, hi, I'm Jamie Bowers, uh, I'm a junior at Duncan High School and I'm Predator in Chief. And I plan on going to a tier-one college majoring in psychology.
And Mister Kane, if they would, if they could, supposed to be, let them show themselves on the video if they would, if they can.
Uh, we. So to show video, so if you guys have the capability, uh, to show your video.
We're not able to, they stopped it.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, no problem.
Evan Lee, go ahead, man, you're next, or Adam, that's fine.
Are we good?
Hey, look, there you go, they turned it back on.
Hello, everyone, my name is Adam Mateek, uh, I am the broadcast executive producer for Texas Youth and Government. Uh, I would like to uh, pursue my dreams of art and animation at NYU.
Alright, next up, Evan Lee.
Hello, my name is Evan Lee, I am an eleventh grader at Duncanville High School and I am the social media editor in chief. And in post-graduation in twenty-twenty-two, I plan to study entertainment business at the University of Houston.
Alright, and uh, last but not least, Cassandra Zapata.
I'm Cassandra Zapata, I'm a junior, um, I plan to go to a tier-one school as well, maybe UT Austin and major in psychology or sociology.
Uh, so council, that's the uh, five state officer that we have uh, have at Duncanville High School. As uh, Councilman Cook said, we appreciate you guys inviting and really just getting a look into how politics works, right? It was very interesting to hear you guys uh, debate and talk about uh, policy and any, I mean. Would like to invite us back out or, as I tell Mister Cooks, use us in any, to, you know, I know in the past, youth and government has been uh, big on the vote. And registering kids to vote at the high school, we actually took kids on a, a field trip. Uh, and took them to vote, uh, early voting one year, so we're gonna continue that process of uh, registering the kids to vote. But uh, we appreciate you guys having us out and anytime uh, you want us to ha- uh, come back out or use us any way, please feel free to uh, give us a shout.
Mister Kane, I'd like to thank and all of the students uh, on behalf of the council, and then I'd like to open up any council member or mayor, any comments to the students at all before they leave the Zoom.
Uh, thank you, Mister Cooks, for bringing these folks to us and Mister Kane, for, for your participation and encouragement of these young minds. In terms of getting involved in government and your participation or watching how we operated tonight. Uh, take some notes, I guess, you know, the, the pros and cons. Uh, but you know, I, I have always told our city council that we are professionals in what we do, we have diverse opinions, we have divergent opinions. But we do carry on in a most professional manner, I'm very, very proud of how our council and staff operates together. And for you folks, uh, you students that are watching this, I hope that you're able to glean a lot of information in terms of how your city is operating. And we invite you, well, you heard, we're going back to, to uh, being, having councils in person on our first meeting in June. Uh, so invite you to show up and, and come on in and then participate, well, you know, you may wanna participate in whatever. Uh, but please uh, come on and then let us talk to you, we, and, and whatever discussions we can have. And I also know, Mister Kane, that each of us, if you ever wanted any of us uh, to come and address your group at the, the school, we'd be happy to find a way on our calendars to come and do that.
Looks like Mister Hager had his hand up, I failed to introduce him.
Okay, Mister Hager and then Mister Jameson.
That, that's all fine, and I, I just wanted to, eh, Mister Kane, if you want me to come and confuse your students about parliamentary procedure, I'll be happy to do it at any time, just contact the city uh, secretary.
It's okay, all the kids knew, there's not such thing as a friendly amendment.
Well, let's define it.
Friendly amendments can only be used for clerical errors.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jameson, you had your hand up and then Councilmember Vera Cruz?
Yes, I was just gonna say, uh, I was so glad to hear all of you have committed to go to college. And uh, just tell you, because I have, I have girls, but, and uh, they all same pathways. To, to go to college, get your education, and I will tell you that you will get discouraged. At times over things and you just keep on plowing, put your hem, dust yourself off, pick yourself up and keep going, you just keep doing it. And good luck to you. Can you hear me? Did you hear me?
We heard you. Yeah, Mister.
Uh, yes, sir, I just wanted to brag on Mister Kane for a second, he uh, actually is a, a member at our church, at Trinity Church Fair Meadows. And at least once, maybe twice a month, he and his wife uh, feed the congregation breakfast that he makes, you know, makes in the morning. So I just wanna brag, he's got a big heart and we really, really appreciate him, Mister Kane.
And not a problem, Councilman Cruz. Vera Cruz, but I, like I said, guys, we really do appreciate you guys, appreciate you guys having us out, uh, we learned a lot from tonight. And like I said, we really would like uh, the experience of the uh, all five of these students got elected in January. And they actually serve a, a one-year term to next January, uh, so anytime, uh, I'll definitely take you guys up on that offer about coming and uh, talking to the kids. But anything else you need from us, you know, please uh, don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you, Mister Kane, and thank you all the students. Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor, it was my uh, presentation.
Thank you, appreciate that very much, okay. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, citizens input, pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero zero seven of the Texas Government Code. Any member of the public has the opportunity to address city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action, all persons addressing or subject to council without the rules and limitations as permitted by law. And the city council has established that citizen comments uh, when spoken are limited to two minutes. We have uh, one individual, I think, uh, yeah, I mean, we need to pause here as well for, go ahead, Kristin.
Yes. Alright.
We are on agenda, item number four. The following, the active. City council member may request items be removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration and vice versa. Items may be moved to the consent agenda from items of, for individual consideration, and that has been done. Item five A, item for individual consideration uh, is being moved to the consent agenda. City Secretary, if you please read these uh, consent agenda items.
Item four A, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a master agreement governing major capital improvement project between the city of Duncanville and Dallas County. For the governance of the major capital improvement program, program and authorizing the city, city manager to execute the agreement. Four B, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of amendment number two to the municipal maintenance agreement with the state of Texas Department of Transportation. To allow the city to install and maintain the restriping and installation of linearers for bike and pedestrian traffic. And the section of U sixty-seven and Noldell with. Away, five A, consider an ordinance amending section nineteen dash one six city ordinance to add Frank Kiesler Boulevard to the list of no-through truck zones.
Thank you, City Secretary, be a roll, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
This is their second.
Second. Max Burnett.
My councilmember, Matt Burnett, City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For, thank council unanimously approved in that motion. Item five B, take any necessary action in the results of executive session, we did not have an executive session, so we'll dispense with item five B. Moving on to item six, staff and board reports, proceed the police department quarterly report, Chief Levigna, you're back up.
Yes, sir, thank you. So uh, this is our quarterly report uh, for the police department from January uh, of twenty-twenty-one through March uh, being the second quarter of the fiscal year, next slide. So you may recall back in um, February, we provided to council uh, our report on the racial profiling uh, report that was done, that was submitted to the state. And during that time, we advised uh, through an independent analysis that we were fully compliant with all aspects of the law, next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, uh, the um, three cadets that most recently graduated from the basic police academy are pictured at the top, Jay Johnson, Anea, and Na'i Pigaroa. I'm still working on that first name, uh, she'll get me for that, and Jessica Piku. Um, all seem to be very outstanding individuals and we're very excited to have them. Uh, we still have two uh, pictured at the bottom that are currently in their respective basic police academy, Courtland Jackson and Esmeralda Pineda. I haven't been able to spend as much time with them or be, be around them as much, but um, I look forward to working with them in the future. Uh, so they're, they had to graduate June fourth of this year. Uh, we did have a civil service entry exam, April third, and that resulted in a sip, an active list of thirteen. For the hiring of two positions uh, that are open as of the test date and as of today, next slide. So recently, um, we brought on a chaplain into our police department. For a number of years, we have not had a chaplain, uh, Mister Moises Ruiz comes to us with a lot of experience in the chaplaincy. And has worked closely with the Red Cross, we're excited to have him and he's up here almost every day on us. And I think uh, we're gonna have to do some more working out to keep that, uh, if we're gonna keep that up, next slide. So uh, there's the cover of our twenty-twenty Duncanville Police Department Annual Report. Our volunteer coordinator, Galen Wilson, had a great hand in this, as several others did, in helping to proof it. Um, I think uh, most of the council has uh, received uh, that report. And it should be online uh, shortly, I'm not sure if it's there yet, I know we've um, been trying to get it there and we're working through some issues in doing so, if it's not already there. But he did an outstanding job with this report and it details the outstanding uh, work that our police department and police officers and all our staff does. And did in twenty-twenty and continued, continues to do today, next slide. So during this quarter, we had some employee milestone awards, Sergeant Joe Emmett uh, achieved a ten-year service bar, a ten-year perfect attendance bar. And a five. Interestingly, about Sergeant Emmett, uh, he had to be out because of, um, he was quarantined because of a COVID, COVID issue. Um, earlier when COVID was taking uh, affecting some of us. And he was so concerned about his perfect attendance to his job here at the city of Duncanville, that he wanted to make sure that wasn't affected. And uh, it was not, as it was considered, uh, workman's comp issue. Uh, Officer David Rollins, ten years of service bar, Officer Trevor Clark, five years of service to the city. Crown Analyst Stacy Trevino, five years of service to the city. Officer Ben Shippman, five years, safe driving bar. And Lieutenant Chris McHale, five years, perfect attendance bar, next slide. So as been discussed, Lauren did a great job earlier on the, the after-action report, and by the way, two days after the city manager started with the city, she facilitated discussion on our after-action report. And uh, she did an outstanding job. But here are some pictures showing how we work together to weather the snowstorm in the fashion of the champions that we are. Not only the police department, the fire department and our citizens, you good effort for. A bad situation as safe as it could be for everyone, next slide. So moving to the water station, city set up a, a time to, to provide waters to those citizens. Or water to the citizens who have been affected and needed some water uh, for various different uh, things. And uh, some of our personnel, some of our employees participated in that, next slide. So also, uh, the city council, uh, after being briefed by Chief Brown earlier uh, this year, on February second. Amended our solicitor, uh, door-to-door cells uh, and peddler ordinance. And uh, we have now required that when someone is, is issued her's permit from the police department. Then they're issued a vest as shown here, they also have to have the permit on their person if they go to door-to-door. This was done to enhance the safety of our citizens so that they could see visually more easily um, that these folks have been permitted. Now, there are other aspects of the amendment, such as the time they can solicit, they're not allowed to solicit between seven PM and nine AM. And currently fifty-four permit holders are grandfathered. Um, and, but the last grandfathered permit will expire August twenty-eighth of this year, so there may be some permitting. The. Of anyone. Founded on whether they should call nine-one-one or, or find an emergent, a non-emergency number. I always encourage a citizen that if they feel uneasy about anything or anyone, don't be hesitant about calling nine-one-one. We would much would rather come out and determine that maybe there was an overreaction or nothing is wrong. Uh, and to have somebody that was injured in some way, be it physically or figuratively, and uh, we have to go from there, next slide. So um, just a little while back, um, Officer Doug Sis coordinated Operation Catalytic Converter Etching. We've seen a big uptick in uh, the theft of catalytic converters off of vehicles. And truly, citizens don't even know they're gone until they get in their vehicles and they start them up and this awful noise is prevalent. So uh, on March twenty-seventh, ninety-eight citizens brought their vehicles, including the mayor. So I'm out there, um, and our uh, personnel did a great job in accommodating those citizens, um, to include. Um, to include, uh, our volunteer coordinator, Galen Wilson, crime prevention officer, Doug Sisk, Detective Chadburn. And Lieutenant Chris McHale and a slew of volunteers. Next slide. So our department's activity for this time period, um, as we report, uh, the number of use of force incidents. Uh, we had five and all were determined to be lawful and within department policy, we have a stringent, uh, review process. Uh, just as we do with, uh, vehicle pursuits. Uh, we had three, all were determined to be lawful and within department policy. One after a brief turn, uh, administrative review determined pursuit was not with. And. Currently reviewing whether training or so maybe, uh, hold in that one. Um, the number of complaints that we had were three, all have been internal complaints for policy violations. All are still under review. Next slide. So our departmental meetings, uh, as everyone knows, it kind of taken a different, uh, realm, uh, with COVID. But we continue to have those meetings and as we, uh, progress out of our COVID situation. Then, uh, we'll move those to more personal meetings and not online, but in January, we had two meetings with sixty-three, uh, partnerships. Sixty-three people attended, uh, same with February, and in March, we had four meetings with two hundred and twenty-six partnerships. And I'll work on that format. Sorry about that. Next slide. So, um, as I think most know, um, not too far back, uh, in the past, we moved from, um, uh, reporting. On an FBI standard. To, um, a Nibers Group A offenses. And they just provide for more information to be gathered. And, um, and that's kind of what this slide shows in all the, uh, different offenses that are reported upon. Next slide. So in this time period, this kind of just shows, um, the number of actual offenses that occurred. That were maybe reported but to determined to be unfounded. Uh, and then that actually happened. Um, and then those that were cleared. Now, understand that a clearance, um, does not happen in a vacuum of a month or a three-month time period. There could be offenses that happened several months ago. Um, prior to, you know, even the last quarter. Um, that suddenly we we're starting to clear because of the investigation takes, uh, a lengthy process. So just because you have an over number that says this is not any occurred. Uh, it may not necessarily show, um, a a vacuum clearance, uh, number. So just keep that in mind if you ever come across a number for clearance, it could transcend a reporting period. Next slide. And this. Major crimes in the different, uh, council districts. Um. To accommodate for ag, uh, ag assaults, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, robberies, sexual assaults and theft from motor vehicles. Uh, next slide will be the February, uh, tally of that same information. And then. As you. The next slide will be for March. And I'll give you a moment to look at that. Next slide. With that, are there any questions?
Yeah, Chief, just a quick comment, and I see other hands, uh, Councilmember Mac Burnett and Councilmember, uh, Cooks. The, go back to that last slide, I guess, well, no, never mind, it's okay. That the, the, uh, the crimes in those specific categories for January, February, March, we see it, it's ratcheting up. Is that attributable to people being, I guess, because the governor has said one hundred percent. Uh, capacity at restaurants and so forth, that it's just a general feeling of release? That there's more and more people out and about than there than there has been in the past? Is, do you think that that's why the numbers, uh, increased between January, February and March?
Well, so let's go back to February and, you know, we'll move to March if, okay, so yeah, there is an uptick. Now, for anyone to say that, um. Crime is attributable to any one factor, I think is, is, um. You know, i- it's a very slippery slope. Uh, I think there are a lot of factors, but that could be one, Mayor, certainly.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, Chief Levigny, on a few slides back, there was a, there was a category. That, um, had all other larceny. And that looks about to be about twenty percent of of what the offenses are. Can you address a little bit about what that is or clarify a little bit about that that is? And also, um, is there something to to help prevent some of this stuff?
Well, certainly, and, uh, thank you for that question, um. So, uh, all of the larceny, you get to a point if. Where. There are a lot of specific categories there, you got theft from a building, theft from coin op, operated machine. Theft from a motor vehicle, which is different than parts from a motor vehicle. Um, and then all of the larceny. Now, that all of the larceny could be things such as theft within a certain dollar range, culinary is what they call it by law, uh, range. That doesn't necessarily fit into the other categories, it could be sometimes. Uh, many have heard from, uh, vacant buildings, copper wiring been stripped from the buildings. The, well, that doesn't fit well into these other specific categories, so it's, it's almost like a catch-all. And there are a lot of things that that can be done, um, to help prevent any crime. Crime hardening is one of the most helpful things that anybody can do for themselves and for, uh, our efforts of the police department. You know, when you think about, you know, how hard you work for the property you have as an individual. Uh, when you leave your car. You know, if that property is precious to you, or if it means anything to you, we will always tell you to take that with you. Don't leave in the car because somebody's coming around to look. And we, uh, a- as the police profession, we are constantly trying to to educate people on how to harden themselves. And so that that that's a huge aspect of what we do and what we'll continue to do. And so I would just encourage people to think of, think of ways in which you can lessen. The, uh, exposure to you being a possible victim, whether it's, you know, physically, physical exposure. Be aware of your surroundings, or whether it's leaving your belongings somewhere where they can easily be taken.
Well, well, Chief, you can, you you can answer my question in a round, I think, thank you for making our citizens aware about the, uh. Motor vehicle theft, and I think what you said before is. We could all do a better job to make you sure your vehicle is parked outside that you lock it. Because I think that's the whole portion of, uh, those stealth of vehicles or getting breaking into the vehicle. Uh, and I know, uh, twenty twenty was a very unique year. But when most citizens always always ask, is our crime though up or down? And so you showed the charts. How would you address, how do we answer our citizens when they talk about, when they ask the question? Is Dunkinville crime very high? How you compare it, how do you compare it year over year? And I, unless you have you on a though twenty twenty in there or not, but. Answer that for, how do we answer that?
Well, in in, a- as I mentioned, there there are a lot of reasons for crime, um, I I concentrated on this quarter. And quite honestly, I I can get back with you on, uh, where we stand as far as, um. You know, how we compared, um. On an annual basis to crime. I think crime, certainly when it happens to someone, it's a tragic, uh, situation on whatever that crime is, you feel victimized. And I I think the victimization of crime and the feeling, i- it. You know, not to ignore those people that truly are victimized when that happens. But I think what we talk about a lot of times, when we're talking about how our citizens perceive crime, is the feeling. And, um, w- we will always and we will continue to do the best we can in making our citizens feel safe, but I can get back with you on.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, if if you would, if if not, back with us as as a whole. Because I I always like to compare either quarter over quarter or year over year. And that really tells us that we can compare whether it's, uh, down or up. I think the number, the numbers, the numbers can't lie on itself, and we're not can, not somebody else but us. So, yes, if you'll share that in the future to us, but where we could have something to look at percentage-wise. This time last year, we were at this percentage. And this, the this this year, this time this year, we are at this percentage. That will help us address any questions that we may have.
And I I can do that and I will do that. But when I bring that to you, understand that in one category, crime could be up. Whereas in another, true, where crime could be down, but there is, you know, the overall rate as well.
Right, and and don't you share that, that's fine. I think the more educated citizens, the we have the better. Thank you.
True. Councilman Arvia, um, to your end.
Uh, yeah, Chief, thank you for your presentation. I think, uh, in our case, it would be helpful to communicate to our citizens if we. Benchmark our statistics against their statistics. Uh, in terms of the new classification model, we've had it for, uh, several months now. And I understand everyone, uh, is probably using the same model, or should be. Uh, in the best southwest cities, so. While we do that to provide some context as to where we actually. Appear, uh, compared to other cities.
Yes, sir, and I I did think about that, look, apparently, in reaching out to our colleagues in those cities. They don't do, uh, even as robust a reporting as we do currently.
So. Oh, that's, 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 that's really too bad, and excuse me for cutting you off, well. Uh, let's see, let's see if we can reach out, uh, a little further than, uh. Uh, cause, cause, uh, there's probably someone out there in the metroplex, and it doesn't have to be a whole slew of cities, just. Just two or three, uh, just cities that are like us. So so that, uh, I think people can get an idea as to where we stand and have it, uh, from perspective.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, any, uh, any other comments from any council members, questions? All right, seeing none, uh, interim Police Chief Levigny, thank you, entire staff, all of our law enforcement officers. Excuse me, for their dedication and loyalty to our city, so that we as citizens can feel safe. So, uh, with that, we will conclude our city council meeting, and the timestamp is nine twelve. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.